Welcome to the March 25th, 2025 City Council meeting. Six thirty, City Council chamber. We'll start with the prayer. Today's session opens. We pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction, which leads us to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May it be granted this day that we wouldn't take decisions which would be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and get a better place to live and work. Amen. Should we salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Scott.
Here.
Councilor Yam.
Here.
Councilor Belanger.
Here.
Councilor Chow.
Here.
Councilor Dakota.
Here.
Councilor Getchea.
Here.
Councilor Janess.
Here.
Councilor Noon.
Here.
Councilor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here. Councilor Mercier. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Elizabeth Betty Ann Busby Casella, beloved wife of the late Anthony J. Casella Jr., with whom she had celebrated fifty-three years of marriage until his passing on January thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Betty was a proud graduate of Keith Hall, class of nineteen fifty-six. Betty had dedicated fifteen years raising her children before beginning her career with the city of Lowell. She retired in nineteen ninety-eight from the retirement board. A devoted communicant of the Immaculate Conception Church, Betty's faith was a guiding force in her life. Her greatest pride and joy were her eight children, Anthony Casella III, Michael, Paul, William, James, Betty Ann, Maria, and Teresa, her twenty-four grandchildren, and her six great-grandchildren. She leaves behind her cousin, Robert, and his wife, Mary, Anne Marie Page. Betty was predeceased by her granddaughter, Jordan Lee Patnod, and her brother, George Raymond, and Bill Busby, previous city clerk, and his sister, Mary Garrett. We offer our sympathy to her family, relatives, and her many friends. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Richard Michael Mullen. He was married to Kathleen Kathy Morris Mullen, with whom he shared over fifty years of marriage. Known by Dickey to his family and friends, he grew up in the Highlands section and was educated in Lowell Public Schools. He proudly served in the United States Army during Vietnam from nineteen sixty-seven to nineteen sixty-nine, and was awarded the prestigious Army Commendation Medal of Valor for his exceptional heroism. Dickey continued his education and received a Bachelor's of Science degree in business administration in nineteen seventy-nine. Dickey became a firefighter with the city of Lowell Lowell Fire Department in nineteen seventy-nine, where he proudly served for twenty-eight years. During this time, he forged many lifelong friendships with his fellow firefighters. Following his retirement from the fire department, he was employed by the Lowell Historic National Park for ten years. Dickey was a member of the Lowell Retired Firefighters Association, Veterans of Foreign War, and the American Legion. He was a communicant of St. John the Evangelist Church, where he regularly attended weekly Mass. Besides his wife Kathy, he is survived by his son Ryan Mullen and his wife Jessica, and his beloved grandchildren Brayden and Shannon Mullen, whom he loved dearly. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends, such as his very dear friend, Fred Abacy. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for all those who passed on since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Donna M. Cox, loving wife, mother, and grandmother. Donna M. Fagan Cox, seventy-five years old, passed away peacefully at home with her family on March third, two thousand and twenty-five. Donna was a devoted wife of the late Wesley W. Wes Cox, who left us on December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Born in Lowell on October tenth, nineteen forty-nine, Donna was the daughter of the late James Fagan Sr. and Mary J. Donnelly Fagan. A lifelong resident of Lowell, Donna graduated from Lowell High School with the class of sixty-seven and proudly served as a girl officer. After graduation, she continued her education at Lowell Trade School, where she became a licensed practical nurse. Throughout her career, Donna held the position of LPN at both Princeton House and Duval Manor in Lowell. Prior to retirement in two thousand and seventeen, she served as a office manager for the city of Lowell Health Department for thirty-two years. During her tenure with the city of Lowell, Donna was an active member of the AFL-CIO Local Seventeen Oh Five. Donna cherished spending time with her family, especially her grandchildren, enjoying many dance recitals, track meets, tennis, and volleyball matches and lacrosse games. Donna enjoyed the ocean, soaking up the sun for hours, especially at Seagull Beach in Yarmouth, Mass., where she vacationed each year. She also enjoyed time with close friends, gardening, and looked forward to the visits from her four fur babies, Ellie and Peppa. Another love was that of football. She enjoyed every opportunity to attend the New England Patriots' opening training camp practice in hopes of seeing Tom Brady. She looked forward to the start of football season, football pools, and Sunday games. She is survived by two loving daughters, Jennifer Pudicati and her husband Lance of Townsend, and Jacqueline Dougherty and her husband John of Borica. Also, four grandchildren whom she loved and was extremely proud of, Jonathan Moore and fiancee Lucy Galata, and Caitlin Moore of Townsend, Hannah Dougherty and Connor Dougherty of Borica. Her sister Kathy Corinne and her husband Joseph, and a sister-in-law Patricia Toop of Lowell. She is also survived by her two nephews, Justin Fagan and his wife Amy, and Michael Fagan, four nieces and nephews. Thank you, Mayor Rourke.
Thank you, Councilor. Any others? Mr. Clerk, could I talk to the chamber?
May they all rest in peace.
We have a business two point one, communication and remote Zoom participation and motion accepted placement filed by Council Belanger, second by Council Chow, all in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. Section three, City Clerk, three point one, minutes of the Housing Subcommittee March fourth, City Council regular meeting March fourth for acceptance by Council Yam, second by Council Scott, all in favor, say aye, opposed motion passes. Section four, general public hearing, along with section five, utility public hearing, not until seven P.M. Next, City Council motion, Council Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. You know, this...
You want to take a motion out of order, Councilor?
Yeah, if we could, we could take the kennel one out of order.
Which one's that?
A second.
What's the number on it?
It's...
Six point nine. Motion by Council Getchea takes six point nine out of order, seconded by Council Mercier, all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor, on six point nine, is it okay if we bundle? There's a petition on the same thing. I spoke to the petitioners about this, I believe, and they agreed to bundle. It's eleven point three, I believe, and eleven point four.
Sounds good. Six point nine, Council Robinson requests City Manager to have the proper department examine our ordinance S. one oh four dash three kennels and provide any recommendation on possible adjustments to assist the pet grooming small business community operating in our city. We do have raised the speakers, Mr. Clerk, is that correct? Six point nine. Mackenzie Van Camp. Is that one of the petitioners, Councilor?
Yeah, the two petitioners, the petition numbers are eleven point three and, I believe, eleven point four.
Mackenzie wants to speak now, she's up.
All right, so is Mackenzie Van Camp here?
Item six point nine is on the floor.
So I'm here in support of a couple of our local doggy daycares, in particular, the Social Pup on Jackson Street, which is where I take both of my dogs. I know that there's a number of new regulations coming into play across the state with Ollie's Law, which is definitely a set of law with very, very good intentions behind it, but there's a couple of things, I think, that may have slipped through the cracks a little bit as it was being pulled together that could have some negative consequences for the doggy daycares and also some of the dog owners in town. Mic still not working? There we go. Got to get real close to it. So in conversations with the owners of the doggy daycares, it's come to my attention that the city of Lowell has an ordinance requiring a limit of no more than twenty-five dogs at any kennel, and under the new definitions with the law, doggy daycares are going to count as kennels. And this is irrespective of the size of the doggy daycare, the number of staff, it is a hard cap at twenty-five dogs, which isn't feasible for the continued operation of the doggy daycares in town. So this is something, as someone who uses this for both of my dogs and who really, really values having these resources in my community, love to have the city take a look at. The owners of the doggy daycares are also here to speak, and they will speak to that part much more eloquently than me, but I just wanted, as a owner of dogs who makes use of these doggy daycares, to kind of put my support in for that. I've also become aware that as part of the broader change in guidelines with Ollie's Law, there's going to be much stricter enforcement of dogs needing to wear collars at all times. I totally understand dogs needing to wear collars with their tags, their rabies tags, their city tags, when they're outside, when they're in public spaces, but there actually is a significant safety hazard for dogs wearing tags while they're in a communal play environment, like a doggy daycare. It just takes a quick, like, plug into Google Scholar, you can find hundreds of articles on the hazards of accidental strangulation of dogs wearing collars in off-leash play environments like that. So I know that this is a state consideration and a state rule, it's going to have to be a conversation with the state to address it, but I would like to raise that as a serious and potentially outdated rule that could majorly impact the health and safety of dogs in daycare environments that would otherwise be quite safe if they were allowed to take their collars off while indoors. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. If the petitioners...
So, yeah, we can vote on this, then go to the petitioners if you like.
Okay.
We already opened, Clerk said we already opened six nine, so...
Okay, perfect. I brought this motion forward, as was mentioned, by the speaker. Basically, it's taking a look at our ordinance and with changes, as we're all well aware. I mean, the lease prices for small businesses in our business community are astronomical. Many small businesses do exactly what they can to just make ends meet, and by capping the amount of business they're able to conduct due to some kind of outdated law, and the reason being for it is a valid reason, from what I gather. It's just, I think this is one of those instances where this cap, because a daycare is being assigned as a kennel type of license, and that cap would apply to that kennel type of license, it's something that I think we need to take a look at as a community and see if we can assist our small business owners in adjusting that through the Health Department and whatever departments would be responsible for this, maybe Inspection Services. Thank you.
Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to my colleague for bringing this forward. Thanks to the petitioners for bringing it to my attention as well, and for everyone being here to speak on this in support tonight. As was mentioned by the speaker, I think what's happened here is a collision between a state law that was passed with good intentions to make things safer versus an ordinance we already had on the books, which is now being relied on to do things that it wasn't originally relied on. Our kennel ordinance that was passed and has been on the books has never been about doggy daycares. It now is looped in because the state is now requiring the dog daycares to be licensed as kennels, which is where the twenty-five dogs cap comes in. So this may be something simple where we can edit the kennel ordinance to say that this number doesn't apply to dog daycares or change the verbiage, I'm not sure. I'll leave that up to the solicitor and his team to figure out, but I do think this is something we need to address. Personally, I do rely on the services of one of these dog daycares. Our dog has separation anxiety. My wife and I can't go to work if we don't have the dog taken care of. We aren't the only ones in a situation like this, and losing these businesses in the city of Lowell will be terrible for me personally, for my family, but also for the city. This is a resource that we have in the city, and I'd hate to see us have to try to, you know, tell residents to bring their dogs outside of the city for care because we didn't update an ordinance. So I'd really appreciate if we could do this rather expeditiously and bring something back for us to get this, as much as we can change locally, changed. If that involves having some discussions with the local daycare owners, I would encourage that as well. And then I think we should also be sending a letter to our state delegation on the collar issue, because that's not something under our control, but it is something that's clearly documented as a safety issue for dogs in an off-leash play environment, which pretty much all dog daycares are. So, Mr. Manager, I would ask that we put together a letter to our delegation, as well as House and Senate leadership, asking them to move quickly on this so that we can avoid any tragedies in Lowell or anywhere else in the state. Thank you.
Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am also concerned about this ordinance, and I concur with my colleagues when they talk about this, and I think the purpose of this ordinance should be amended. When we have kennel daycare, it does not offer or allow overnight, so I don't know why we can't raise it to forty. And when we have overnight kennel accommodations, then we should look at that at a lesser, probably, but I'm not the expert here, and I don't own a kennel or run one, but I think the purpose of this city is to invite businesses here. Here we have two businesses, one here many, many years, another here the past eleven years on Gorham Street. I don't understand why we're being, you know, kind of blatant in telling these people, this is what we're going to do. I know the city is much better than that. I would open this up. I know it'll be sent to probably the Law Department if we could have the input from the residents that own these businesses. This is very, very important, and I don't want to lose businesses here that established their roots here, and now we get a law that we're going to discombobulate their whole business. I don't want to be a part of that. I want to include these businesses and say what is fair to them. I don't want them to say, gee, we'll have to lay staff off. Nobody wants to do that, so if we could just try to be on the same page and include the very people that it affects. Thank you.
The Solicitor wanted to see a word.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, so we had looked at this, you know, I saw that it came out on the agenda, and I do think it's as simple as just amending the ordinance. We could put in a further definition for a daycare as a type of kennel, but, you know, put language in there that it's not going to be, as Council Mercier mentioned, for anything overnight, and we could raise that number from twenty-five up to, say, forty. That wouldn't conflict with the law, and it's pretty straightforward on my end.
Mr. Robinson.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Solicitor. Is there a formula or is there some mechanism that controls the cap of how many dogs, say, a daycare grooming business is able to service? Is it a matter of square footage of the size of the property, staffing levels, like, do all those things factor in? Because I just think, like, to take the twenty-five number and just kind of pick a random number at, I just don't know if there's a mechanism in place. I want to see this, as you mentioned, I think a main component of this is no overnight. We're talking daycares and day grooming and whatever hours operation, but no overnight boarding services or breeding services or none of that. Why cap? If a business has the staff and the size to do more than forty, I wouldn't want to cap them at that. I just think whatever formula is utilized and makes sense for best practice is something we should take a look at, and I think it is very important to clarify the no overnight, no breeding, and this is exclusively to, you know, the daycare and grooming services. Thank you.
So, Council, want to make a motion to have the ordinance amended now?
Yes, please. Can I make that motion to amend the ordinance? No.
Second by Council Mercier. Mr. Clerk, so the motion would be to amend the current ordinance now to increase the occupancy. Solicitor, would that be another public hearing coming back in front of us?
Mr. Mayor, it would be separate the kennel and the daycare, not increased, but separated out so there's no requirement.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So as a suggestion, would it make more sense for me to, and I know this is time-sensitive, I understand that, as a part of this, I would have to reach out to other departments anyway to get some feedback, because I have no idea how many dogs should go in a facility like this, what it should be based on. I can bring back a report as soon as next week, speak to who I need to speak to saying I would recommend this, 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 and then maybe the council can make a decision then, and I can write the ordinance up the next week.
I'm also concerned about the person that spoke about the collar and the tag. I understand, I don't want animals to be choked or whatever, but if they have that piece that tells them that they were, you got their shots, they could still carry it in. Do they have to put it around the dog's neck? I don't know. Can we look at that aspect of it, too? I happened to look at the crowd when that person was speaking, and everybody was nodding in agreement, so I know my cat goes outside. My cat had all his shots, but I don't want him to have a collar with a, I don't want him to get stuck in a branch and get strangled. I don't want that, so I couldn't relate to that.
Mr. Belanger.
If someone could carry it on their body, on their pocket or something.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the council, I think we have an idea of where we want to go with this, and I think we can probably try to bring something back next week and try to move forward, unless there's other ideas or thoughts of how we want to accomplish this particular goal.
Council Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I'll through you to the Solicitor. Before the law was passed by the state, there was no cap for daycares, correct?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yeah, that's my understanding.
So the intention is if we can somehow put language in there so that it goes, reverts back and there's no cap, because forty seems arbitrary to me. If we can just try to write it so it goes back to the way it was, but still fall within the state law on the kennels, and I think that's what we're trying to do here, if I'm hearing everybody correct, that would be the wish of the body, I believe.
Sound good?
Yeah, that sounds fine. What I would do in that scenario is I would just put that right up against Ollie's law that just came out, just to make sure, but I don't see that being an issue.
Thank you.
Council Scott.
Thank you. I guess I'm still trying to figure out, though, why they lumped daycares and kennels together, if that wasn't the intention of the law, if it was just something that was left out in the legislation, but I'd also make, ask that we send a letter of support of eliminating the collar requirement to our state delegation. I've never sent my dogs to a kennel that allowed them to have a collar on their neck, and I've seen dogs actually in one of the kennels choke the other dog from having the collar on when they eliminated the requirement, so if we can include that as well. Thank you.
Excellent. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. So to the two petitions, eleven three, eleven four, those who have filed them and those who have registered to speak on them, next week, we got to have a response back from Solicitor's office after he contacts all the necessary departments, and he'll have something for us. Do you want to wait until that comes out so you can look at it and then make comments The motion was already made by Council Robinson, was seconded by Council Mercier to take eleven three out of order. Eleven three, Tony in Sarri Salak, Crazy Canines Incorporated, request City Council amend kennel ordinance regarding the number of dogs on site.
Hello. I don't really have much more to say, other than what you've already covered, so while we're here, we're open for questions. I had this whole speech written out, but you all answered everything.
Well, I couldn't imagine that everything you heard is probably exactly what you want to hear, right?
What's that?
Everything you heard is probably exactly what you want to hear.
Exactly.
Right. So like I said, it'll come back in a week or two, you'll see it, you know, ahead of time. If you want to come back and speak on it again, feel free.
Sure. That works. Awesome. Thank you.
Eleven four miscellaneous, Sarah Quigley, Social Pup, request City Council amend kennel ordinance regarding the number of animals on site.
Hello. I'll come back when I see the law is up, but I did just want to give you some guidance as to Ollie's Law. Does not have yet the regulations out guiding our daycare, they're not to be released until the end of December, so we won't have the number, Ollie's Law will guide us on staff to dog ratio, square footage size, how many dogs we're allowed to have based on that space. They have their first meeting tomorrow on Zoom to discuss, their board is kind of discussing that, and then they'll have their first laws out kind of mid-July, and then those go into effect in December. So I don't know, I don't personally want to wait till December, but if we could have something that allows us to just continue as we are, have been, I've been in practice now for eleven years, that we can continue until those guidance, those laws come out and we have a better understanding of what is to be expected of us to continue our business in Lowell.
So I hope, don't wait till December, hopefully within two weeks, have something back and come back and look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, great. Motion to refer law, for a report and recommendation.
One person on...
Eleven three.
Okay. Yeah, there's a registered speaker.
Motion to refer law, recommendation, all in favor, say aye. Eleven four, we have registered speakers, Mr. Clerk, you said? It's on Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay. So we do have other registered speakers. Is anybody that's registered to speak want to speak now? Are you okay with the conversation we had earlier? Does that make sense? All right, great. So eleven forty-four, motion by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Noon, to refer to law department for a report and recommendation, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, and we'll see everybody back in a couple of weeks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can I make a motion to take?
First, please. Yes, very good.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Can we take six fourteen out of order?
By Council Dakota, seconded by Council Getchea, six fourteen out of order, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Six fourteen. Council Dakota and Council Scott, motion to rescind on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five votes to demolish Smith Baker Center for the specific purpose of issuance of RFP with strict time and financial parameters, no second needed. Council Dakota.
There are registered speakers, Your Honor.
Do you want to take those first, Councilor?
That'd be fine.
I'm Bruce McCauley from one thirty-nine Methuen Street here in Lowell. I've kind of been here every week to support Smith Baker Center. Many of you already know me, and if you don't know me, you've learned about my passion for historic restoration. So since I spoke on the twenty-eighth of January, I joined the Smith Baker Foundation as their VP, and what a terrific, talented, diverse, supportive group of folks that I've made friends with. So they certainly have a vision for this space, but I think to rescind the vote to tear down the building is a smart move for all of us. It gives an opportunity for everyone to look at the space. Is it a restoration? Is it a salvage effort? I think we need to know that. I think we need to be in the space, and I think there needs to be an opportunity. I would have tremendous regret if I didn't fight as much as I possibly could for this beautiful piece of property. This is what Lowell is known, it's known for transformation, so let's have Smith Baker be one of those proud moments for Lowell history. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julie Winslow, resident of fifty-two Sydney Street in Lowell, just moved here back from Chemsford, where I sold, and coming back to Lowell, I think part of it is the history. This is a beautiful town. I was born here, I've worked here as a nurse off and on over many years, and when things are gone, they're gone, so I can't say enough, I was sad to see that this beautiful building was slated to be demolished, and I would just ask if that could be rescinded. Is there any way that we can help save a building much like people, this personality, the history of what that building has had here, and the possibility of rehab? I guess I'm an old hospice nurse, I don't want to see it die. I'd like to see you guys find a way to bring it back, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight. I prepared my statements unlike my prior to people speaking. I wish I could just speak off the top of my head, but I want to thank first the city mayor, Dan Rourke, city manager, Tom Golden, city councilors for letting me speak again on this topic, but especially my city councillor, John Dakota, for putting this... for putting this motion forward tonight. We have a group here tonight of 15 people to support this effort to have the city develop an RFP to save the Smith Baker. I first want to thank a few of our members here. Julie Winslow, who we just spoke, is an outstanding nurse who just recently moved back to Lowell, and is part of the Borgard Trio. Her brother Joe of the Lowell Pirates fame, and her sister Amy performed, her sister Amy's a performer named Amy B. Dory Alexandopoulos, who is another registered speaker, she's instrumental in getting the financing for the project at 650 Merrimack Street for the Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership. And my fellow architect, Jay Mason, who I showed an abandoned house to 33 years ago, and helped convince him to move from Virginia to buy and restore a lovely Victorian home in Tyler Park. My daughter, Yana Honduras McCarthy, and her husband, Thomas Dixon, who recently married and just back from their trip in India, now reside here in Lowell. And my wife, Angela, who 40 years ago told me no, when I said I wanted to move to Berkeley, California to pursue my architectural education, and made me stay here in Lowell. Please support the motion tonight and let the RFP get developed, and to see if we can pull together a plan for the Smith Baker to restore and repurpose it. I know that we can follow the same path the city used many years ago, and repurpose this building as a community center, with cooking classes, music lesson space, as well as a magnificent performance venue. And we will satisfy the HUD requirements, just as the city did when it was the senior center. To use a sports analogy, I know our benches are not the deepest, and the talent alone will not be enough. But just like the strong foundation the Smith Baker has, it is on this firm footing. We hope to build and make this dream a reality. And to see the Smith Baker once again as a community center and performance space that we need and sorely miss. To quote the wonderful counselor, Rita Mercier, "Let's give this old girl one last chance." And try to, let's save, and try to save the Smith Baker. Thank you very much.
Jay Mason.
Mr. Mason, you're up.
Thank you. I didn't hear my name. My name is Jay Mason. I reside at 415 Pawtucket Street. I would like to speak just for a moment about the embodied energy in this building. We often don't really think about what goes into a building and what is part of the real cultural, but also material foundation of that building. So I brought a visual aid to help. This is a brick. If you've been in Lowell for any length of time, you've seen a number of these around the street. There are 6,700 BTUs created in this brick. That's its embodied energy, which is the energy required to extract, process, manufacture, transport, and install a material or product. And the reason I'm talking about this is because what we have in the Smith Baker is, by my calculations, and I brought my, my data, if anybody wants to take a look at it, there's approximately 116,640 bricks in that building. Those bricks represent enough energy to power a vehicle at 853 BTUs a mile, 925,500 miles. That's enough to circle the globe about 37 times. That's a lot of energy. Average person who lives to age 85, that's the average age these days, God, God help, God willing, for those of you who are under 85 anyway, that average person drives about 845,000 miles. 845,770 is the, is the number I pulled down. That's 34 times around the globe. So you can understand, there's more energy in that building than there is in a person's lifetime of driving, in the, the particular vehicle I'm talking about. So there's hidden environmental impact. And when we think about the lost culture, the last history, the last, the last opportunity, those things are all great, but what's really, what we can't also forget is that embodied energy. It's there, it's, it's, it's still functioning and still can be used. So I want you to consider that as well as everything else that we've talked about tonight. Thank you very much.
Yana Honduras McCarthy.
Hi. Thank you all for hearing this motion, and I'll be brief. So I'm a child and adolescent psychiatrist here, working in a pediatrics office in Chemsford in Drakeett. And when I think of this building, especially like using it as a community space, that's something that I think like our community could really use a lot more of, of spaces to connect with each other and connect to the city. And the building, just looking at it, is just such a beautiful, old, historic building that has a lot of character, and I think has a lot of potential to be a space that people could really love and connect to each other in. So I really hope that you decide not to tear it down for now, and let the Smith Baker team figure out how to repurpose it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dory Alexandopoulos.
Great job with that.
Really?
Nothing close, right?
1524, 1524 Gorm here in town. So the last time I was in the Smith Baker Center, I was playing my guitar and singing for a Lowell Housing Authority event, and it was a wonderful community event. I am motivated here today, part by sentiment and part by community promotion. I'm asking everyone here to consider the recent structural report that has been mentioned before me, and the feasibility of restoring Smith Baker. As part of the decision process you're going to undergo, and before you decide to vote on its demolition, because I hope one day I'll play and sing there again. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Dakota.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have one other, she forgot to register, if my colleagues don't mind her getting up and speaking.
Motion by Counsel Dakota, allow the speaker, seconded by Counsel Murcia, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion passes.
State your name.
Just name an address, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bonnie McIsaac, and I didn't plan on speaking tonight until I heard the Smith Baker people were here. I was the former, oh, 385 Wentworth Avenue, in the Oakland section of Belvedere. I was the president of the Lowell Philharmonic Orchestra for five years, and during that time I got involved with the Smith Baker folks, not deeply, but I was a part of the support. And all I can tell you is I had a vision that is shared by some folks. The Lowell Philharmonic Orchestra was founded in 1903. And before I came along, I didn't even know that we had such a fantastic orchestra in the city. And it has blossomed in the past seven, eight, 10 years. Now it's headed up by Tinson Lamb, who's now the president, and Marshaande Smith, who is now the music director. They are looking for a home, and I cannot think of a better place than the Smith Baker facility, for a variety of reasons. The Lowell Philharmonic Orchestra is our orchestra, and since 1903, it's been here. It used to perform at Liberty Hall when the Lowell Memorial was first opened up. And now it needs a home again. And the Smith Baker is situated, located in such a place that it could serve the high school, which does not have an orchestra, and it could serve the community. And I just make that plea. Please reconsider the Smith Baker. Rescind that motion. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counsel Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jay, how many bricks? How many bricks?
Six.
Thank you. All right. I feel much better now. First, I'd like to, to thank the speakers for their passion. Seven weeks ago, I made the motion demolish the Smith Baker Center. The time to rehab the building had come and gone. In fact, 2015 appeared to be the last window of opportunity for a financially viable rehab. After the vote, Dennis McCarthy contacted me. Mr. McCarthy is an architect who has served this city on the zoning board of appeals for well over a decade. As you all know, Mr. McCarthy is passionate about preserving the building and are all of the members of the Smith, Save Smith Baker group. Mr. McCarthy stated that if he and his engineer had the opportunity to tour the interior of the building, then it only would they know if their group could possibly proceed with the project. My initial response to Mr. McCarthy was that I did not want to rescind the vote. However, I would find a way for him and his engineer to gain access to the building. Last week, I filed a motion that authorized Mr. McCarthy and one other person to enter Smith Baker accompanied by a city official contingent upon him securing a one-day insurance policy to protect the city. This is a simple solution without disturbing the demolition vote. Well, the simple solution was opposed by a few of my colleagues who claimed that Mr. McCarthy looked around, who claimed that Mr. McCarthy looking around inside the building gave him an unfair advantage in the event that this building eventually went out for an RFP. Because colleagues objected to my simple motion from last week, tonight I have a motion to rescind the vote to demolish the Smith Baker Center for the specific purpose of issuance of an RFP with strict time and financial parameters in place. And once, once again, I want to thank the Smith Baker Center for their passion, and I welcome any of my colleagues' sentiments. Obviously, we spoke at length last week about this, but been more than happy to hear their comments tonight.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to be on this motion with Counsel Dakota. I was not here the evening that the item came up. It wasn't on the agenda at the time. It was in response to a, a report from the city manager, and I was out of the country at the time. I would not have supported it at that time. I feel like this is a significant part of our history, and once it's gone, it can't be replaced. I think one of the speakers said it so well. Once it's gone, it's gone, and that's it. And I don't know, perhaps it has gone too far already, and the building is not able to be saved. But for me, this is a hail mary for the old church. We have a community group now that has come forward, that are very interested in being involved, and I think we owe them the opportunity to have one more RFP. Thank you.
Counsel Justin, Counsel Robinson. Counsel Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Throughout this whole process, I've been, you know, hopeful that we could do something with this building. The report didn't give me a whole lot of faith that that would happen. I'm still concerned with the expense associated with just bringing that building back to a safe environment, much less the expense associated with turning it into a usable space. However, I'm not against rolling the dice, as long as we can be assured that there's some chance of a positive outcome here. I guess my biggest question for the solicitor is, how long would we expect a RFP process to take to get to the point where we know whether or not there's a viable purchaser for this building who has the funding to rehab the building, to at least make it safe? My biggest concern is that that building is going to harm, harm someone, and I don't want to see that happen, because we're all hoping for a dream here. So that's my concern. So, Mr. Solicitor, how much time are we really talking to run this process?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. My best guess, two months. You put together the RFP, you put it out, you know, the proposals come in, they're reviewed, scored, you know, we would see what came in, and maybe at that point we can make a determination. I think that's, I think two months would be enough time.
Okay.
If I may, Counsel adjust. Maybe that's a question for Ms. Ms. Baez-Rose, from the DPD.
Baez-Rose.
Yeah, timing-wise, I would agree that for the RFP process itself, that would make sense. Of course, once RFPs are received, they have to be reviewed, determined, you know, who's selected, and then that starts the negotiation process for the disposition. So, you know, we'd have to come to some kind of purchase and sale. I would also expect that if this RFP process is going to move forward, to Counsel Dakota's earlier point, we would, we, the city, I think it would be in our best interest for that RFP to include some commitments on when, when securing at minimum the exterior of the building was going to happen. I think we'd want to build that in, you know, whether it be wrapping the building or some alternative that the group, that, that the interested party was willing to commit to. But I think we'd have to have date certain of that written into the RFP process. And I also think we'd likely want to have some language in, in the RFP that, that would ask developers to commit to starting by a date certain, in which case, if that didn't happen, then there were opportunities for the city to sort of reclaim ownership of the building. Because I think putting the RFP out and having an entity come up with a response doesn't equal like something happening in a reasonable timeline that is going to make the location around the, the property any safer. And so I do think that we'd want to ensure that we included that stuff in. So, you know, the RFP itself, yeah, probably a few months, but we'd, we'd want to have language in there that had some, some hard dates.
Okay. That's what I would like to see as well. I don't think two months is the end of the world. I also understand that there's going to be time on the back end for those negotiations and discussions, but I do want to see this moving quickly. I don't want us to be having this same conversation a year from now, and debating what to do at that point. I think that we've already had two years of that sidewalk being closed and it being a danger, and I don't want to continue that if we don't have any real, true hope of being able to save the building. The last question I have in terms of timing is, were this motion to fail tonight, and we stay on the track of demolishing the building, how long would we expect that process to take?
Ms. Baez-Rose.
So the city has already, we've done a hazardous material assessment of the property, so we're actually just waiting for that report to come back to us in final form. And the plan was to include that in, to demolition language for an RFP. So we also would need to submit a project notification form to Mass Historic. They usually take about 30 days to respond. Our assumption is that they're going to come back and say, this is a property of some historical significance, and then that would initiate a process with Mass Historic. That process, along with the, as we've discussed previously, the, the conversations with HUD would be ongoing. I would imagine it would, at minimum, be a few months for that as well.
Okay. Thank you. I think with the prospect for those, for that timing, which we're going to have to go through, no matter when the building is taken down, if the building is to be taken down, I don't think that taking a couple of months to see if we can get a workable RFP is asking too much. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the speakers. I'd like to thank the groups that have been pushing to, to bring life back to this building. This motion was made to go out with a RFP back in January, as was mentioned. I do think, I understand that, that the intent behind this motion, but I have some concerns, because it's almost like we're trying to walk, walk, run, and crawl at the same time. We just heard from DPD. We're looking 120 days, even if we want to demolish. Why would we move to rescind the demolition if it's going to take that time? I think to pull the brakes on that, because, I mean, let's be realistic here. I, I really think that we have a group that's very interested and has great intentions on the usage of this property. I'd love to see it. But on the other side of the token, we've seen with other land deals, we need to carve out an RFP. out an RFP. How can we be expected to vote to rescind the demolition of this building on an empty promise of an RFP that none of us know what it looks like? And I think we need to be very clear on this RFP, the parameters of it. I think something that was touched on multiple times. It's not about the city trying to make money on this property as much as it is whoever takes ownership through the request for proposal process should have the capability to at least stabilize the building and make it safe, whether it's, as DPD mentioned earlier, wrapped, make sure that the slate's not falling off the roof anymore, the bare minimum to make sure it's somewhat safe before the next phase. I mean, we're talking multi-phases on a project of this size that's been in this state of disrepair for as long as this has. And I'm not willing to just turn my back and walk away from this property, but we have to have a real conversation. Everything that's going to be involved with this, I know people are aware somewhat, but we also, as a city, can't go out for proposals on a property with a report. Transfer ownership on hopes and prayers with no real financial commitment to stabilize this building and let it deteriorate further until whoever takes ownership can secure that kind of funding. There's no timeline in place in that situation. I think something on the RFPs that should be required, if that's the wish of the council, is we need a minimum financial commitment upon transfer of ownership, I think, so that you can show and demonstrate that you can stabilize this building if nothing else. We're not expecting you to go in and refinish every piece of wood in the building, but at the very bare minimum, stabilize the property and make it safe. I also think we need realistic timeframes. I think we need a clawback clause that would be included in the RFP in case the funding does not come through. And then, but I think while all of this is going on, it makes no sense to rescind the demolish because if it's going to take us 120 days either which way, I think we still get up to the point where we're making the phone call to bring in the company to demolish. Put that in the draw once it's ready to go because if we do go out with a RFP, at the end of the day, if no eligible proposals come in that satisfy the minimum requirements, then we're going to find ourselves back in this same position. So why would we hinder getting that ready to go just in case we need it, which I hope we don't? But I think if we're going to do this, let's do both at the same time. Put the, draft the RFP, put it out, see who's qualified to bid on the RFP. In the meantime, continue with the process necessary for demolition because if we don't get any suitable bids on this property, we're going to have to revert to the demolish. So, I don't know if this is the proper motion or what. I would prefer to see the demolish kind of still continue through without pulling the trigger on it while we draft the RFP and come back and take a final vote on what that RFP looks like before we put that out. Thank you.
Counsel Child and Counsel Getche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the maker of the motion for bringing this forward and also the wonderful speakers that come forward tonight. I agree with many of the concerns that my colleagues had mentioned before. We spoke at length about this process early on when we took the vote. As everybody knows, when we take a vote, we look at information provided, and I think, you know, I can tell you, it wasn't so much about the finance aspect of it. It was more about the public safety and the economic development and to do what's right for this neighborhood and downtown. We made the best decision that we could back then. Now we have developed new groups with strong passion and trying to give us one more chance to save the buildings, you know, like Mr. McCarthy, quote our favorite Counsel Mercy, try to save this, give one more shot, give this building one more try to see what we can do to save a piece of history that I don't think many people in the city disagree that this building is really a piece of lol. I reiterate my colleague's statement again, once it's gone, it's gone. So I think it's worthwhile, whether it's a couple of months in the process. You know, we waited this long, so what is another two months? I will support this motion to rescind. Thank you.
Counsel Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rook. You know, we talk about passion, but there's also laws. So when people say they're passionate about something, they are definitely passionate about it. But government has laws that we have to follow. So when a counselor comes up and says that we stopped someone from going through, and Yvani can testify to this, when someone wants to be part of an RFP process, you have to open up the process for everybody. One person can't go in there and then become part of the process. And I believe the solicitor outlined that last week, when he said, "You can't go in there as one person and then attempt to bid on something because it's an unfair advantage in the process." Passion carries all of us in a different place, but all of us can be passionate about something, but none of us in here are going to be the next Tom Brady, but we love football. And when you look at the Smith Baker, just the outline, we had prior speakers stand up here and say that they don't have any funding and they can't get any funding until they actually own the building. So how do you write an RFP that says, "Hey, we're going to wait for you to get grants and get this all done"? Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Yvani Rose Baez, how long would it take roughly, the city, to get a $3 or $4 million grant?
It's a trick question.
Do they fall off, do they just fall off a tree and end up in your lap in 90 days?
Sadly, they don't.
You sure?
Not in my experience.
Okay. So, a year, two? Because those grants are not, and you guys apply for them year in and year out, and it takes a long time from, the application process has to be open for that grant, number one. Number two, it doesn't fall in, okay, let's just hold on, we got this bid for an RFP, now I got the RFP, the next day, there's not always a grant available to say, okay, here's $3 or $4 million. And as other counselors here have highlighted, they said right out, "Look, we got to secure that building." So, how does someone do that if they don't have the funding source in place when they do the bid for the RFP? And if that's included in the RFP, and people have already gone to counselors in the open trying to get reversed on a demolition, most people would say that's a conflict of interest. And most people would say that some of these things are underhanded when you're trying to bid out and you're going to write an RFP based off of what you want someone to bid on, as is being outlined here. The city has an obligation to represent the residents, and it's all the residents, the ones with passion, without passion, but they also have an obligation to safety. And some people are questioning Gail's engineering thought, and maybe they're right. I don't know that answer. But when you look at it, we all have an obligation here to follow the laws within. And an RFP is not as easy as what people think, to get funding sources, to get through, and everybody here is listening to passionate people, but a week ago, two weeks ago, you voted to demolish it, and now today you're saying, "Oh, wait a minute, somebody is very passionate." Well, we're all very passionate. That's why we sit here. And passion shouldn't carry decision-making. We have an obligation to look at that building and say, "Okay, what is in the best interest of the city?" And right now, we don't have any bidder who has any capability of funding sources until they own the building. And that could take years to get those grants, as Ms. Baez-Rose just outlined. It's not that simple. And I would just caution this board in pushing off to rescind, just to write an RFP, because are we going to see the RFP before it goes out? Are we going to vote on that and all agree to what's going out? Or is that a manager function, which I believe we're crossing over into the manager's function? That's his job, not this board. So I just think that, you know, we took a vote, we should all stand by what we believe, and that building, if this vote passes tonight, next week, I will have a motion in here to secure that building for safety reasons because I don't believe it's safe. I said that in the beginning. When you have the sidewalk blocked off like that, someone's going to get hurt. And we saw the pictures and we have the report. Thank you.
So you wouldn't file a motion next week for Gallas?
If it doesn't pass, then I won't have to if it's being demolished.
Counsel Mercia.
Because we're in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you. One week we vote, there's a vote to demolish, and then the next week, we're changing our mind. Well, back some months ago, we voted to support the MBTA zoning, and then we found out that that was wrong. So now you have a motion that says, "City Councilor, revisit the MBTA zoning requirement. We're going to revisit something we already voted yes for so that we could now vote no." So don't throw me that in my face because that is a... We got to be consistent. I do change my mind, I'm going to admit it. I do change my mind, but I'm not going to change my mind on this one. Two years ago, we think about two years ago, well, we've waited two years for this and it's been vacant. Two years ago, I didn't hear the word demolish. I didn't hear that. It was just empty. It was forgotten about. But the word demolish came up very recently, and to me, it was a wake-up call and an eraser, an obliteration. Now there's a wake-up call. And I asked the very first time there was a vote, "Could we please just give it one last chance? Is it going to work? I don't know. I'm not a reader." But I hear the passion in the people, and I'm willing to give them that shot. So I say, "Please, let's give them that shot. That's all I'm asking for." Thank you.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess everyone here, you know, want to preserve this historical building, and we want to do everything we can to preserve it. I think the vote to rescind back in January was not an easy vote for a lot of us. We did that, we did that based on a safety reason for our public citizens. We did that based on the consultant report. Since then, I appreciate the persistence of the Save Smith Baker Group and other to see, to want to save this building. Like some of my colleagues, in January, I voted to demolish it. And I said it at the last council meeting, when I voted to allow two people from the Save Smith Baker going with our inspectors, making sure that we're not liable, I was going to vote for it as well. But because some conflicts there and that Counsel Dakota pulled it back so that, come back now for rescind the vote. Rescind the vote, this one last opportunity, does not mean that I do not believe or do not care about the safety of our citizen. But because of the timeframe that we have, short timeframe, if we were to put out, if I'm going to vote for this, is to put out the RFP with condition, condition that whoever that is, Save Smith Baker Group or anybody else, secure the finance in place without it, I would not support it. So, the RFP is going to go out, you have financial commitment in place, and you got to be timeline in place as well. And Assistant City Manager, DPD Director, Yvani Baez-Rose, no, she know her work, and we as a council will take a look at it as well to see whether or not the RFP is out. Yet, the Save Smith Baker Group or any other group cannot secure finance or no commitment in place, finance commitment in place, and then we should not, we should come back to, as we did, we can still do it, come back to a motion to demolish it. But now, let's give it one last shot.
Counsel Blazza.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. For starters, I would like to thank the speakers, the folks on Save Smith Baker. I think their commitment and passion to preserve our city's history is very commendable, and I want to thank them for that. And I can see emotions running high tonight, as well they should be. It's a beautiful piece of our architecture, unfortunately, that has been neglected for a long time. Now, this putting the Smith Baker out to RFP, excuse me, is not a new scenario here. Now, we've been down this road. It was in the hands of a local nonprofit, a very effective local nonprofit, for a number of years, back pre-COVID, 2017, 18, in that range. They had it for a number of years, it was unsuccessful, back when construction costs are probably a third of what they are today. So, to go through this process again, to put it out RFP for 90, 120 days, heck, that's the easy part. You know, once an RFP is awarded to a local organization, the supreme challenge here, the issue, underlying issue here is financing and funding. Now, the Gail report indicates, for what they could see now, and by that, I mean, to Yvani Baez-Rose's opinion, the hazardous material report is not yet to come back. We are waiting for that, which could be damning, very well could be damning, number one. Now, I've heard over and over again about the, it's structurally sound, the integrity's there. We do not know that. No one can say that with absolute certainty, as the Gail report indicates that many of the structural components of this building were hidden by decorative features of this building, beautiful features. And they expect much more structural degradation in this building. So there are many, many unknowns to their estimated cost of approximately $5 to $6 million. I think that's more like $9, $10, $11 million easily, all day long. When you get in there, the nitty-gritty we saw, unfortunately, if I was to make a comparison, it'd be the 1922 building of the high school, and the unknowns that we're going through there and that we see now. And I think that would repeat itself here at this building, unfortunately. Again, maintenance was an issue here over the years, and let that be a lesson to us going forward. But I think there are too many underlying issues here with this building. Although I do love the intended use, a museum, much-needed, great public use, music hall, museum, I would love to see it. But that is something that has little or no return on investment. You know, so therefore, you're almost ruling out investors. I could be wrong. And solely reliant on grants and donations, to the tune, again, in my estimation, in the vicinity of $9, $10 million. To me, that's an insurmountable task from the history of this. It's been tried before for far less construction costs. It's unfortunate, it's sad, it really is. But I think it's time the building has to be torn down. As I speak right now, there is Jersey barriers surrounding it, it is literally crumbling, and it has been for a number of years. It is a safety hazard, something is going to happen here, it's an absolute liability to the city as we speak right now. So I do appreciate, again, all the activists, the Save Smith Baker, Counsel Dakota's motion, I respect and appreciate it very much. But however, my stance does not change as it has back in January. I think it needs to come down, unfortunately. It's time. It's sad, but thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the speaker who came out to speak today, and I really appreciate your concern and what you want to do to preserve our city history and culture for the next generation, including my children who are growing up here. For me, this building is means so much because it's located in my district across the street from the city hall. I'm told, and I learned that so far, members of this organization raised about $1 million already, pledges from their member. One individual pledged a quarter million dollars to save this Smith Baker. It's commendable, and I really thank you for your passion and for your support and what your vision is to preserve this building. Thank you so much.
Counsel Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rook. I do agree with Counsel Mercy's words that I did change, and I agree with her purpose that she's saying about passion. Sometimes passion make people say things that are unbelievable. The difference between the MBTA zoning is it's having a negative impact on the quality of life of our residents, not passionate about where someone wants to go with a building that is a dinosaur and ready to fall down. So when you look at the outline of that building, nothing anybody said at that podium has changed. And if anything, the building has gotten worse. We all remember... We all remember just a few weeks ago, we had a rain, and then ice, and then thaw, and it got in that building. The rain got in there, I'm sure it iced up, I'm sure it expanded, and the building is what it is. But I do agree with Counsel Mercia that sometimes you do look at things for quality of life for residents, and there are changes within. But we can only go on the information that we were provided. And the information we provided from GAIL associates clearly states they can't see the structure, and it clearly states it needs four million dollars in work. So that's what it comes down to. If somebody has four million dollars at the podium and wants an RFP with four million dollars before they bid, let's do it. But we haven't seen anybody come to the mic and do that. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
No.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Getchere.
No.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Public hearing just passed.
All right, so after that, could you, wanna suspend the rule, take 6.6 out of order?
Sure.
Thank you.
Going back to the public hearings, 4.1 ordinance to amend zoning extension TTF zone, Rivers Edge Road, second reading by title. In ordinance, amending code of the city of law Massachusetts with respect to chapter 290, thereof entitled zoning, by extending existing traditional two-family district zoning district to include the areas of Rivers Edge Road and Lowell, which is presently zoned suburban neighborhood multi-family. We'll start off, the public chair, the oldest speaker, in favor? In favor?
Good evening, Mayor Rourke, Manager Golden, members of the council. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the petitioner, Residents First Development Corporation. With me tonight, I have my team somewhere around here. I have Diane Silva. Diane is the longtime volunteer president and treasurer of Residents First. We have Brian Malisi. Brian is from Haley Ward. Brian is the engineer for the project. And we have Dennis Connor as the project manager. Residents First was established many, many years ago to help create additional affordable housing opportunities within the city. One of the primary developments that Residents First has been involved with is the reinvention of the Julian Stale project, which is now known as the Rivers Edge Development. To date, that development consists of 108 single-family homes and 47 duplex units. The existing development at Rivers Edge is all located within the traditional two-family zoning district. And by rezoning the remaining portion of that area, the 12 and a half acres, the development team will be able to design a project that is more harmonious and in character with the existing development at Rivers Edge, as well as the neighborhood in general. We were before the planning board at its March 3 public hearing for a recommendation to this council. At that planning board meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to approve, or vote to, to approve the zoning change for the council. So with that, we are here tonight requesting the zoning change from the existing zone, which is a suburban multi-family zoning district, to the traditional two-family zoning district, so that the development team can begin its final design of the final phase of the development of that project. We're here, we're happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that anybody may have. Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak in favor? In favor?
Hi, Jeff Thomas, 76 Bowden Street, neighborhood person for 47 years, and it's about time that project's gonna be finished, and it's the old Charles E. Terrace, now Julian Stale. Thank you.
Anybody else wishes to speak in favor? In favor? Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Donna Barnes, this is my husband Jerry, and we have an interest in that. We're very happy to hear that it is a two-family zoning. We're happy about that because we own a lot in that particular area, and we have for the last 24 years. And we had a parcel there that we sold to Residents First for a certain dollar amount, and also to get one of the lots, that was part of the agreement. So it's been 24 years.
We're still waiting to build.
We're still waiting to build.
Mr. Geary's right there if I talk to him, okay?
Yes.
I was 87 when I sold it, I'm 61.
Got gray hair, but anyhow, so we're very happy to hear that, but we're here to get some guidance and some help because we are rebutters. We've never been informed of any meetings, any changes, and there's been quite a few changes over the 24 years. And so we just kinda would like someone to point us in the direction of who to speak to, to get on a mailing list, to be informed about the issue. We have a lot of questions about the development.
Have someone talk to you right now. This is Shawn Machado.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, he'll give you the card, he'll talk to you, give you the call.
Oh, perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. That's what we're mainly here this evening about.
Awesome, great, thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak in favor?
Well, thank you, everyone.
In favor? The portion meeting is closed. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Opposition? Opposition, that portion meeting is closed. A motion to adopt by Counsel Yem, seconded by Counsel Getchere. Comments? Counsel Scott.
Just a quick comment, I guess, for Attorney Geary, perhaps, he could answer. Just for the people at home, the residents that, like these residents that are coming forward right now that are asking about the difference between suburban multi-family and traditional two-family, can you just kinda give a quick explanation of what that means?
Sure. The suburban multi-family district in the city allows for a more dense project. So I think that the dimensional requirements require a minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet and a certain lot area per dwelling unit. So, for example, if you had a 20,000 square foot lot, you could probably get seven units, for example. So that type of development contemplates a much more dense project, you know, think of a multi-story condominium building, if you will, as opposed to, what we think we're gonna be proposing here is 16 duplex structures for a total of 32 dwelling units.
So it's correct?
All owner occupied.
Okay, so I'm correct when I'm telling people that we're actually limiting density by important episodic.
We are, we are. And as I said, this property was zoned traditional two-family until 2020, when it was rezoned suburban multi-family, with the anticipation that the density would, an increased density would be good. But actually, it's really not appropriate for this development.
And it's made it hard to develop, I believe, so it's long overdue for this project to move forward, so I'm glad to see it. Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the Residents First. I know them very well, worked with them before, and I have many friends and clients who live in the project. And this is a really a good project that extended what happening is right now, and a lot of people are waiting for the next phase, the development. I already have people contacted me, say, when is they gonna build it? And I say, hold on, I will let them know. So they really love the area, and what the development had provide is a really good homes for individuals with low, moderate income, and for duplex, they rented to another low-income family on the other side. So I wholeheartedly support this project, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a wonderful project. This is the final phase of what needed over there. We talked about that a while back, about flooding in that area. This duplex owner occupied is going to address the flooding in that area, and people is gonna be really, really happy because it's no better place than Residents First and Low Housing Authority partnership. And this is a project that they're doing, they're doing well. So, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Getchere.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Counsel Mercia.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion to suspend the rule?
Yeah, one more public hearing.
One more?
One more public hearing for us. Five utility public hearing, 5.1 National Grid, request installation of one SO pole on Hayes Ave. Give a second reading.
No, just open it up.
No, okay. No second reading needed, open up to those speaking in favor? In favor? Ms. Ng, how are you?
Vasna Ng, 1101 Turnpike Street, here for National Grid. National Grid would like the city's approval to install a solely-owned pole to service the residential upgrade at 100 Hayes Ave, and also it'll rectify the aerial trespass of the existing service line coming off of pole 6.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Portion meeting is closed. Those in opposition? Opposition? Opposition, that portion meeting is closed. A motion to adopt by Counsel Janess, seconded by Counsel Noon. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
I just make a motion to refer to.
Motion to refer to Warren's recommendation by Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Janess. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Counsel Noon, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, motion to suspend the rule, take 6.6 out of order.
Motion by Counsel Noon, take 6.6 out of order. Counsel Chow, 6.1. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes, 6.6 by Counselors Noon, Yem, and Chow. Request the mayor proclaim April 17, 2025, as Cambodian Genocide Remembrance Day, to recognize the 50th anniversary of the fall of Cambodia. No second or third needed.
There is a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor. Tara Hong.
Mr. Mayor, is that okay if you allowed everyone to go first and I go last?
You're the only registered speaker on this.
What's that?
You're the only registered speaker.
You're the only registered speaker.
I'm only one registered?
Yes.
Motion by Counsel Noon to allow registered speakers, seconded by Counsel Getchere, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Go ahead, Sotia Chou.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselors. Sotia Chou, room 130 John Street, Lowell, and I'm also here representing CMAA and the Proleuk Khamay, which I'd like to take the next couple minutes to share with you. I'm here in support of the motion 6.6 that was brought about by Counselor Noon, Counselor Yem, Counsel Chow. Thank you very much. As you, some of you may or may know, this year is the 50th anniversary of the beginning of the Khamay genocidal regime, or port between 75, 79. On a personal level, I lost my father, and I lost my younger brother in front of me due to starvation. So to us who have lived through the regime between 75, 79, this is very important for us. Let me go back a little bit in terms of how this came about, because this is collaborative effort between individuals, obviously CMAA, and other organizations also. We have over 40 people who are partnering in this. We have folks who are coming from Boston, from Lynn, that's been meeting for the last, puriously, it's the last six months, on a weekly basis, to plan a series of events, which my co-chair, Sotia Chou, will share with you about the different events that will be coming up for the, starting the later this month and through the end of May. So what is Proleuk Khamay? Proleuk Khamay, the word proleuk is the Khamay word for soul. So as a group, as collaborator, we have calling out South Proleuk Khamay, and we named this as a 50-year of journey of remembrance and resilience. The remembrance is, like I alluded earlier, it's about remembering those who died or passed away during this regime. So on April 17, we will have a vigil that will be holding outside of City Hall by the refugee monument, and more events to commemorate that. On the resiliency side, is that we want to recognize and elevate and honor those of us who Khamay American diaspora, who have endured all this suffering, lived through the refugee camp, arrived here, settled in the city of Lowell, in the new country, and till now become embedded in part of our community here. So that's the whole purpose of Proleuk Khamay, which is to recognize the suffering, the killing that we've gone through, and also recognize the contribution, the resiliency of our community. And Sotia will share with you all the different events that we have coming up, and...
Okay. Thank you. So, Sotia Chou, I actually reside in Chumsford, 151 Concord Road, but I have been in the Lowell community for over 25 years, including 19 and a half years at Enterprise Bank. And, you know, this Proleuk Khamay series is meaningful to me. I was born during the labor camp period, during the genocide, and, you know, obviously, just like many people, we've lost a lot of family members to the regime. But we also want to celebrate, you know, those who came as refugees and children of refugees who've accomplished a lot, and we want to celebrate culture, arts, pretty much, you know, everything, but we don't want them to forget about the sacrifices that was made as well for us to exist currently. So, you know, the series of events that we have, we have Khamay American Literary Arts Day, which is gonna be at UMass Lowell. We have a lot of partners, like Sotia had mentioned. We have a launch party at Middlesex Community College that is on the 25th. We have film screenings in different locations. The Eco Film Series, actually, for this time, is going to be covering topics around survivors and conservation work in Cambodia. And then we have the Remembrance Vigil on April 17 at JFK Plaza. Thank you. I know we're getting some support from the city as well to provide some equipment to make that happen. In addition, we have two exhibits that are being planned, one at Loading Dock Gallery at Western Ave Studios, and another, fingers crossed, everything goes well, at the Lowell Community Health Center. They have that huge, beautiful vacant space at the fifth floor. So we're hoping that we'll able to showcase a lot of different things about people's lives, about people's sufferings, about their hopes and dreams, et cetera. And then, just a couple of days ago, we received news that the DPD is working to do a ceremonial tree planting at Amory Park in honor of the 50th anniversary, so we're very thankful, again, to the city for that opportunity. On May 3, we are showcasing refugee performers in a musical performance that is a cross between opera and musical, essentially. And these refugees perform during the refugee camps, you know, these masters. And so it's gonna be a very meaningful story that talks about, it's a parallel between what happened during the genocide and, you know, how they were able to separate, but then also reunite later on with loved ones. And then at Lowell High School, we're doing, we're organizing a panel for the high school community. Thank you very much to those part of LPS who's been involved with that. And then we have a closing ceremony and culture showcase at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium on May 23. And, you know, that's going to kind of be the grand finale. We invite everybody, you know, to please attend as much as you can. The only ticketed events that we're doing are just two events, the launch party, which is serving as a fundraiser. As you all know, when you're doing a lot of events, it costs a lot of money. We're actually trying to raise about $150,000 for all these events. So any support that, you know, all of you can provide would be great. Besides that, if you have any questions, we do have a beautiful website, www.proleukkhamay, P-R-O-L-E-U-N-G-khamay, k-h-m-e-r dot org. We also have a Facebook page, Proleuk Khamay, and Instagram, where we'll be highlighting other different things. But, again, thank you so much. Just appreciate Counsel Chow and Counselor Noon, Counsel Yem, for bringing up this motion, and we hope that it passes. Thank you.
And quickly, a quick thing I want to acknowledge, some of our folks sitting up there and over here, so we've been, like I said, we've been meeting weekly, twice over, to put this together, and hope that this will bring some fruition, will come to fruition, and will showcase not only our culture, but our contribution to the city. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there is one registered speaker.
Can we get the registered speaker, please?
Tara Hong.
I'll keep it short. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Minister Manager, and everyone here at home. My name is Tara Hong. I'm a state representative for the 18 Mile South District, and I live on 305 Thudon Street. Today, we stand together to honor the memory of those who endure unimaginable suffering during the Cambodian genocide, and to recognize the resilience of Cambodian community here in Lowell and around the world. I want to thank... I wanted to thank Councilor Noon, Councilor Yen, and Councilor Chow for their leadership in requesting that April 17, 2025, we proclaim a Cambodian genocide remember day. This marked 50 year since the fall of Cambodia, a painful chapter of history, but also a testament to the strength of survival and their descendants. As a Cambodian American, I did not personally live through those hardships, but I hear, I've heard that story from my family member, friend, my Pooh, Ming, my Om Sray, who endured the darkness period of our homeland history. I know that many of you here in this chamber heard similar story and we all carry that weight of that story with us. That's why I'm deeply grateful for the, for the three councilor who brought this motion forward. I look forward to the official proclamation of April 17, 2025 as Cambodian genocide remember day. As we reflect to this anniversary, I just want to repeat that as we, we must also look to the future. The Proleng Khmer 50 year journey of remembrance and resilience initiative is an important effort to preserve history, share story, and strengthen our community. Through this initiative, we will uplift the voice of survival, educate future generation, and ensure that the lesson, the lesson of the past are never forgotten. I want to take this moment to invite all of you, everyone here and at home, to the special event on March 25 at Middlesex Community College, where the Proleng Khmer team been working on the official lawn on this event. This event will be space, it will be a space for remembrance, storytelling, and community healing. It's an opportunity for all of us, whether you are Cambodian or not, to come together, learn from the history, and support one another. Let's continue to honor the legacy of resilience that defined Cambodian, Cambodian people. Let's stand against injustice in all its form and let us ensure that remembrance lead to action so that such as this awful event will never, ever happen again around the world. Thank you.
Councilor Noon, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In front of each of the councilor, there is a fly in the schedule for all the events that Sir PTM spoke of. I want to thanks all the speakers. I know that back in 2019, this, some of the council here, Rita Mercier and myself and others who was there, 2019, we had similar proclamation to, you know, remember April 17. Then a couple of year, four year later, State Representative Vanah Howard actually had one at the State House, that the speaker presented his proclamations to the Cambodian people or the Khmer people who was there, present at the State House that day. Today, this year, make it special because it's a 50 anniversary of the fall of Cambodia, April 17, 1975. This day serves as reminder of the atrocity that occurred between 1975 and 1979, when the Khmer Rouge committed horrific crime against its own people. This day provide an opportunity to reflect and pay respect and offer prayer to the victim who lost their life to this regime. Rita, Councilor Mercier, been to Cambodia, been to the Tulsa Land, where you see all the skeleton of the people that the Khmer Rouge killed. This proclamation will tell all of us that we are committed to never, never forgetting the atrocity committed and to cherish the life. When Sir P talking about if this motion pass, I was no doubt that all my councilor, all my colleague would enthusiastically support this motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Yen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the speakers who came up and speak, and speak today. And I also want to thank the committee who organized this. This is the important years to remember. It's been 15 years. It's also coincide with the veteran, the Vietnam War veteran who have also survived and came home after the Vietnam War. So I, for one, I'm the only survivor in my family after the fall of Khmer Rouge. So every day I live in pain, losing members of my family, immediate family, that I have not met for the past more than 50 years. So it is meant so much and I want to reach out and thank Mr. Manager, Tom Golden, the city of Lowell, who reached out to us to say what can we do as a city. And I also want to thank my colleagues for their support and make this a wonderful event. Remember and the resilience of the Cambodian refugee who came to United States to Lowell, rebuild the city of Lowell together. So I thank you again for your leadership, everyone who speak today and who organized this event. Thank you so much.
Councilor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank Councilor Noon for putting forth this, this motion and include all of us to partake and support, support this motion. I want to thank the speaker, the CMA, and the many committee members for organizing this meaningful event. As the speakers mentioned, I don't think there's many Cambodian diaspora around the world that were not personally affected by the trauma and the violence of, of the genocide. As Councilor Yen mentioned, he lost family. I lost family member too and my two brothers were taken to be killed at that time by the grace of God. They were let go at the last minute. To this day, they are suffering from PTSD as even 50, 50 years later, seems like a long time, but pretty much seems like yesterday to many Cambodian survivors. They're still suffering nightmares, psychotrauma. They're still missing their, their loved ones whom they lost when they were young. You know, so 50 years ago, it's a number, sounds like a big number, but it's really into most people's minds. It's really just yesterday and a lot of them still live through it every night in their nightmares and so forth. So this, you know, this celebration, this commemoration, this remembrance is, is meaningful, not only to the Cambodian in Lowell here, but to our allies, to the Cambodian diaspora in the United States and around the world. Look forward to participating in it and we invite as many friends, family members to partake as much, as much as possible. Thank you.
Councilor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many years ago, when we had an opportunity to go to Cambodia, I went with like Boba Malone, Yang Ju Choi, counselor who was mayor at the time, Rodney Elliott, and we went and we spent our own money. This was not a city venture. This was our own money. I went and I realized that we were going to be on a plane for like, I don't know, it seemed like five days, but it was 20 something hours. But I risked that because I felt that we had a large population of Southeast Asians and I wanted to feel what they've been through. So we landed in Thailand, went over the border, we visited four internment camps and it was just so moving. We went to the killing fields. We went to the Tool Sling Prison, which was once a high school that was changed over to be a prison. And we saw pictures on the walls and we saw the atrocities that were taking place and what they did to the woman when the Khmer Rouge did to the woman who would not reveal where the other members of the family were. They tortured the woman till she said where they were. It was, it was horrible. It was moving. It was, we went to a hospital that Kevin Coughlin and a group of people funded because it was just a simple place where people were standing outside for hours to try to get some help. So through the years, he's sent money and built this hospital. And we went and toured that and people were grateful to have a place to see a doctor and get a wound healed and taken care of. And so it was quite a moving experience. So I'm honored to be a part of this community where I got to know the history of the very people that I represent. And so I'm honored to support this motion because it's very important. This is what this city is all about. It, it's a fabric of one piece of, of material wound and sewed with another to make a beautiful quilt. That's what this city is all about. So to say this, the Cambodian are having this event, God bless them, I, I'm in support of that. Thank you so much.
Councilor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Councilor Noon, Councilor Chow, and Councilor Yen for bringing this motion forward. It's an excellent motion and as Councilor Noon said, a very easy motion to, to support. I think it's important that we listen and remember and understand the lived experiences of our neighbors and our friends, what they went through during the horrible genocide under the Pol Pot regime. But it's also important for us to, to celebrate all the contributions since they've come to the city. And I think this is just a wonderful way to do it. So thank, thank you for this motion.
Councilor Belangia.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I too, I want to thank my, my colleagues immensely for bringing this forward, as well as the speakers here tonight. I want you to know that I have a ton of respect and admiration for all of you for bringing this forward. And so I very much look forward to April the 17th and all the activities that will take place in and around. You know, this is going to be, you know, a dark day for many in the Cambodian community, but nonetheless, as Representative Hong said, it's a story that needs to be told. Because this, just much like the Smith Baker, the Cambodian community is Lowell's history, is part of Lowell's history and needs to be told and commended. And so I look forward to celebrating this day with my good friends in the Cambodian community and hearing the testimonies and above all, thank them immensely for making Lowell their home. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Quickly, Councilors Chow, Yen, and Noon, just ahead. Mr. Rogers will, will take it and shows contact the three years to put something together that's appropriate and, you know, does the day, makes sense?
Thank you, yes.
Mr. Clark, we do a roll call for this, please?
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Yen.
Yes.
Councilor Belangia.
Yes.
Councilor Chow.
Yes.
Councilor Dakota.
Yes.
Councilor Getya.
Yes.
Councilor Janess.
Yes.
Councilor Mercier.
Yes.
Councilor Noon.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke. Yes. Motion by-
Oh, sorry.
Councilor Getya to take 610 out of order, seconded by Councilor Robinson, all the fair say aye, opposed, motion passes. 610, request CMA to have the proper department explore draft and construction employment ordinance similar to Town Barica's bylaw, Article 20. No second needed. We do have registered speakers, Mr. Clark?
We do, Mr. Mayor. Amy Searls.
Hello, my name is Amy Searls. I live at 76 Bolton Street. I'm here to support this motion. I am a member in good standing of the laborers' union and I feel that this will help support the local people and the local jobs in, for the residents of Lowell. And we are very passionate about it. I heard that word works very well this evening. So this is something I'm very passionate about as well and I'm here to support as well. So thank you.
Jeff Thomas.
Hi, Jeff Thomas, 76 Bolton Street. Good evening, Council and City Administration. Speaking tonight in support of this residency requirement clause, this is a great idea and innovative for the city and its residents and also the contractors on any projects within this city. I'm speaking for myself as a city resident, also a proud member of Labor's Local 429, right here in Lowell. Currently, my trade, we have roughly 300 people on our books. 25% of that are all Lowell residents. Many projects have come and gone throughout the city without the town workers, just taking their money and extra income down the street to their town. As city residents, we can spend any of our disposable income into the local economy and not out of town for other towns to benefit from. This city has big, big plans for development soon and in the future. One major contributor to Lowell economy will be this motion. I say make it here, spend it here. Thank you very much.
Tim Collins.
Good evening, Timothy Collins. I live on 103 and L Street in Centerville. Really proud to be up here in support of this motion for residency requirements on all future construction projects. I've been a local seven iron worker for 11 years now and the last five I've had like a real blessed opportunity to be able to put my hands on a lot of the big projects we've done in this city. I went from the courthouse, then I did the garage right after, and I've been the steward for the ironworkers at, at Lowell High School since we erected the first column. You know, me being home, you know, it's more than just a job. A lot of people say, oh, we're going to give Lowell residents a job. It's more than just a job. There's a huge ripple effect that has happened throughout my family with me being available and not being, with lack of a better term, a slave to Route 93, taking up four hours of my day. I've been able to be there to help my wife go through nursing school. My son is a sophomore. He's a sophomore class president at Lowell High School. And just last, a couple of weeks ago, you know, I was in the gym that his dad built and I'm sitting there and I'm watching him help coach the Sullivan Girls Basketball Teams to another championship. And, you know, I, I can't help but think like, there's probably another couple hundred residents in the city who would love to feel that same sense of pride in, in, in their city. I have the ability on a weekly basis to stir, to steer money into our local economy. When guys ask me, hey, Tim, what's good for lunch? I say, hey, you know what? The guy at the, the City Hall Cafe makes a mean sandwich, you know? I'm, I'm able to, to open them up to new experiences and we, we have the Southeast Asian community here tonight and they're experiencing their cuisines and, and even, you know, in closing, you know, you want, people like to talk about trickle down economics, right? So me being able to have a good union job with good pay and a good, good protections has allowed me to, most recently, just this past week, and submit paperwork to open my own mobile catering business in this city. I submitted the LLC information. So these are the real trickle down economics and hopefully like, you know, as a business owner and as a resident of this city, I can employ people. This is how the money really stays in this city. So I implore everybody listening and anybody watching to support the councilors on this motion and to have these residency requirements because they are important and these people deserve food on their plate as well, not just the developers. Thank you.
Is that it for the registered speakers? I'd like to suspend the rules to allow Mr. John Burrows to say a few words as well, please.
By Council Robinson, seconded by Council Getya, all the fair say aye, opposed, motion passes. Mr. Burrows.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke, City Manager Golden, City Council.
Your second address is Elliot's Hot Dogs, right? That's why I could speak today?
I was just about to say that, quality of life, you know? I have the opportunity of representing some partners. I'm also on a board over in Barica. I go with Mass Hire. I was up at Greater Lowell Tech a couple of years ago. I recruited a 19-year-old female. Well, she's 19 now, but she's working in Walthing, probably having a cow steak and cheese at the end of the Mass Pike in 128 building a bridge. There's no reason she can't be working here in Lowell, eating at Elliot's Hot Dogs. Council Getya talked about quality of life, you know, these guys being a slave to 93, getting up at four in the morning, getting into town at six, doing their eight hours, getting home, missing their kid's soccer game. People talk about the pushback. I, I don't say union or non-union. It's about Lowell residents and Barica, it was about Barica. It's about Lowell residents. In Barica, it was about Barica residents, you know. If you look at the language, qualified help. So you're not forcing people in one way or the other. It's about qualified help. It's about an apprenticeship, having the right training, demanding those good-paying jobs. But like you said, where you work is where you spend your money. When you go to lunch, you're spending it there. You talk about traffic, taking cars off the road, having pride in your neighborhood. This works out for a lot of people. If you look at the Boston residency policy, which is based on private jobs, over 50,000 square feet, we're there demanding, I think it's 51% of the job hours are residents of Boston, 40% are people of color, and 12% are women. We're not saying that. We're saying you've got to make an effort. That 25% of the employees are residents, and you can ask for relief. You can come to the city council, whatever board you make, and say, hey, we reached out to the tech for an apprenticeship. We reached out to the Red and White Academy over Lowell High. We reached out to Job Tech, U-Tech, Mass Hire, you know. Problem before was it was triggered by an unemployment rate at 7.9, I think it was. Took a pandemic to trigger that, COVID, when everyone was home. So I think this would be good for Lowell. It's good for us. When we built Barica High, there had to be like 60 residents that worked on it. And, you know, having a four-minute commute home, be able to see your kid's soccer game, be able to see, you know, your daughter play basketball, see that recital. It benefits people. It's that quality of life that a lot of people miss in that battle, you know, the Battle of Boston. That's a long road going there. But it might not work. You can have some tweaks in there, make it Lowell its own, you know. And I'd like to say, I did live in Princeton Village in 1980, Dan, before I shipped it.
A little over line, John, but that's all right.
All right. Elliot's.
He asked for it, yeah.
Well, thank you. I hope you guys consider this. I think this would be a benefit for the city of Lowell. And it's, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I really want to thank all the speakers. I think something like this, you know, last week, we celebrated a wage theft ordinance. We're protecting those that are working in the city and doing business in the city. I think this is long overdue. I think many times I've spoken to people, both union, non-union, that live in the city and go by construction sites that are publicly funded in some instances, whether it's a grant or federal state projects, and they're out of work themselves. So they're watching all cars with New Hampshire plates and whatever else do the work next door to them while they're looking for work themselves. And the way the community of Barica carved this out, they also included apprenticeship. Now, if we think about apprenticeship, it's not necessarily just, you know, trades or any of that. Apprenticeship, you could have a kid that's in a auto drafting or AutoCAD program, that you could bring him on to some of these job sites to start doing the renderings, and that would count as residency requirements. In addition, I just think, as the speaker spoke, by paying someone a fair wage in their backyard, it alleviates sometimes transportation issues, other times. What it allows and lends itself to is that sense of community pride, that sense of, I did that, my hands got dirty on that project, as well as the economic benefits that you're throwing that paycheck that you received at the end of the week back into that economy. You're stopping a Dunkin' Donuts in the morning. You're going to eat lunch at one of the local small businesses. You're going to the laundromat, or whatever it may be, the car wash, you're getting fuel. There is a major benefit to providing decent wages in our community and trying to retain and keep that wage in our community. And we look through downtown, and we always are scratching our head, how do we keep disposable income in our small businesses thriving? Well, here's another perfect example and opportunity to do so. And one thing that stood out to me in this ordinance from the town of Barica, there's a need to ensure that residents receive the maximum benefits from the economy of the town, specifically regarding the economic benefit to construction employees in the construction of any public building or public works project. I think that says a lot. And I think we've done great things in the past. And as I mentioned multiple times, with the worker statue, this community was built on labor and work. And any opportunity the city has to retain that, yes, we're going to get pushed back and say, oh, well, I know this has come up in the past, but we can't tie people's hands. Well, yeah, this isn't tying hands. What this is doing is putting our people to work and offering opportunity to the people that we look out for and create policy for, which is our residents. Thank you.
Counsel Getia?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. As we heard, all the projects outlined that the speakers have worked on, we can't thank them enough for being part of our community and giving us the quality of life that we have. But it fits right into our plans for public transportation. When you talk about students and we talk about people in our city, we talk about qualified people who may not have transportation to the places that they're being employed at currently. When we talk about the city, we all have goals on the school side and the city side. If we have the most qualified person from Lowell, let's hire them. That's been a philosophy for the city for as long as I was employed for the city back in the 80s. It was if we have a qualified Lowell resident, let's hire them. Let's make them part of our team because there's a certain pride that comes with building in the city. When we look at a lot of the high school kids' transportation, this fits right in, and they outlined hiring of students. So I truly can't thank them enough. I think this is really a no-brainer for the city. We get to hire Lowell people, qualified Lowell people, to do jobs that we all need around here. So why would we not want to feed our economy back? So thank you again, Mr. Mayor, and I look forward to seeing this pass and more Lowell people working and taking pride in our city. Thank you.
Senator Belanger?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. You know, this council has always been a big proponent of, you know, hiring local and retaining our local help to the best of our ability. And this motion would achieve that. I think it's very timely. As Speaker Jeff Thomas said, we've got a lot in the pipeline. We really do. And we're going to make sure it comes into fruition. And now would be the time to implement something like this. And I will add that, you know, I'm a big proponent of the apprenticeship programs, always been a big fan of that. I know many stories and families that this has helped. We're talking about livable wages here, very good wages where you can achieve car ownership, homeownership, and we need to do the best we can to keep these salaries in the city. So it's hopefully spent local as well. So, great motion. I wish they were all this easy. So I intend on supporting it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Senator Scott?
Thank you. I'd also just like to say that I think it's a wonderful motion. I see no reason not to support this. In a prior life, I did construction sales when I was much younger. Massachusetts is an economic leader and always has been. When construction's doing really well everywhere, you know, we employ a lot of local people. When it's not doing as well, I saw on the construction jobs, you would see New Hampshire plates starting to show up, and then Rhode Island plates. And then when the economy got really bad, you'd start seeing the Tennessee plates starting to show up. And this is a way to keep our jobs local. And I expect that we're going to see a boom, hopefully, in development here in the city of Lowell. And I 100% support this. Thank you.
Counsel Rosia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I lived this motion. I lived in this environment. My husband was the president of Local 39 Painters and Allied Trade for 21 years. And at that time, way back, probably before anybody in this room was born, he was a person that knew that there were 15% of people living in Lowell that were residents. 15% would be hired to go on a job. And then one day, it got obliterated. I don't know what happened, but then, when he finally did get work, he'd go to Boston, he'd go to Somerville. It was tough for him. Now I see this happening, and I'm very, very happy. And it says 25% of the craft people, the construction employees, should be completed by Barica residents. That's good. I'm very, very proud. I wholeheartedly support it. And if my husband were here today, he'd be very thrilled about it. Thank you so much.
Great. All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion passes. And glad to have you, listener. Thank you. Returning back to the original motion list. 6.1, Counsel Getia, request city manager to provide to city council with a list of fire hydrants replaced, the location and the date they were replaced over the last three years. And I want to take 6.2 as well. Request city manager to provide to city council with the last three years of fire hydrant inspections done by the Lowell Fire Department during the annual inspections. Seconded by Counsel Rosia, Counsel Getia.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, this shouldn't take a week to get back. It should be something that's on a list, and we should see it next week. And I don't think they're really outside the lines. If there's an issue, we need to correct it fast. And we need to understand what the issue is. Is it, what is the reason why we're in the position we're in? You know, we just had a fire over off of Lawrence Street in the fire hydrant out front, was inoperable, where we had to call the water department and get them over there. And it's not the first one in the last two weeks. So it's more or less, okay, let's see where we are and try to push people to higher goals and outcomes for the city. As Mayor Rourke had put in before, I would love to see that one coming too, is how many gates have we done during the gate program also? But I'll get to that when we get back to it. But I think this is an extremely important piece to see when we're putting our firefighters out there. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion passes. 6.3, Counsel Getia, request city council revisit MBTA zoning requirements for parking. Seconded by Counsel Belanger, Counsel Getia.
He just combined them. Thank you, Mayor Rourke. This is something that we've seen come up because of a building project off of Gorm Street. And at the time, there was a mistake made. And I believe a mistake made anyway. When I read it, it said up to .5 spaces. And I thought it was .5 spaces. So that's on me. But it wasn't really highlighted when we talked about it. So it's something that we really need to look at. In the MBTA Communities Act in Massachusetts, it encourages cities and towns to reduce parking minimums. It does not say you have to. The law does not require specific parking ratios, but it does require communities to consider the impact of parking on developments. So we're not considering it when we don't give anybody any parking requirements. That's the problem. And even in their own outline, it says to consider the impact of parking on development. So I think we need to just go back at this and look and see the density ratio and see what will happen. So we can still put it back to the original requirements and require that, and then have people come forth when they start these projects. And so I thank you for entertaining this motion.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion passes. 6.4, Counsel Getia, request city manager to take the city council on the capital plan for upgrades at the Riley School Gym. Seconded by Counsel Belanger, Counsel Getia.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I was in the Riley School, and I think the whole school really needs it. And I didn't see it in our outline for the MSBA projects over the Riley School. So that's where the questions come in. We're not seeing those updates over there. When you go in, when you walk even in the hallway over there, you've got pink and yellow from like the 1960s, your grandmother's kitchen still in the hallway down there. And it just doesn't present well. Then when you go in the gym, the floor's buckled, there's still leaks in there. And it just is not really playable when you stop bouncing a basketball and it doesn't come back up to you. So there's really issues there. If we can, just give us a report on where does that lie in the MSBA projects? Is it something that we can actually get in time now? Is it something that we can get right in and try to get some of this stuff rehabbed over there? Because it really doesn't present well when you go in there. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion passes. 6.5, Counsel Noon, request city manager to reach out to our state delegation urging them to support HD 326, an act to modernize funding for community media programming. Seconded by Counsel Janess.
There is a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark?
Adam McKeon.
Hello, thank you very much. I'm Adam McKeon. I'm the executive director of LTC. And this is really about updating. So the Cable Franchise Act, when it was set forth in its original intent, was to bring media back to people. If you're going to allow the right-of-way in a community to be used to bring cable television to people, then those people should be able to make their own media, which is the whole purpose of public access television and where we're on TV right now. This is kind of about updating. The State House has a couple of times had this bill in front of it to put this new idea in front of them. And that is essentially that same right-of-way that's being used for cable television is being used for internet. Streaming services like Netflix, Amazon Prime, Hulu, all of them. There's a zillion of them. So this is now kind of gaining a little bit of steam, and I'm not sure if anybody has asked, and I appreciate the motion here from Counselor Noon on here, to ask our delegation to support this. There's about 50 petitioners, I think, right now in the current bill as it is. So it would just be formally asking them to support this, which would bring it back to public access stations like LTC.
Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Adam, for speaking or advocating for this bill. As we all know, that LTC provide hundreds of hours of municipal meeting to the public annually. Along with that, they also do local election coverage. And they do, you know, coverage on events, you know, such as Folk Festival, Water Festival. I think when, I just very, I'm a hopeful person. So I think when this bill become law, the fund collected would allow LTC to continue operating well into the future. Without this fund, without this bill, it's going to be trouble for LTC and any other local accesses, you know, around the state. So I hope that the delegation will firmly advocate this and that, you know, that it pass. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion passes. 6.7, Counsel Robinson, request city manager to consider working with the property departments to coordinate cleanup efforts in our business districts, utilizing workforce, volunteers, and public works resources for spring thaw and cleanup efforts. Seconded by Counsel Janess, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. This is just something, I think, if we can try to figure out a way maybe to iron out a day you have everyone on. Because I know in the past, it's been very helpful, say, you have a crew of guys out, they blow the sidewalks down, while you have the sweeper right on hand that comes by and grabs it out of the gutter, and coordinated efforts makes short work instead of chasing our tail and just getting piece by piece. And then that way, it's, we never really get a good cleaning going. So any effort to do a spring cleaning would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion passes. 6.8, Counsel Robinson, request city manager to have the property department establish a report.
What's your number?
2025.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Could I please bundle 6.8 with 6.16?
6.8, Counsel Robinson, request city manager to have the property department establish and report out 2025 street sweeping schedule. That's 6.16, Counsel?
6.16, yep.
Counsel Scott, request city manager to provide an update on an odd-even street sweeping pilot program to ensure the FY 2025 street sweeping calendar is posted as soon as possible, allowing residents to move their vehicles to help maintain cleaner streets. Counsel 6.9, 6.8 is seconded by Counsel Scott. 6.16 is seconded by Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. My motion speaks for itself.
As does mine.
All right, very nice. All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion, Counsel Getia, good.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the manager. Hopefully, we're out on potholes right now. And hopefully, we're all out on potholes right now.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Yes, we are. We have our crews that are out right now. And we have been working on the street sweeping schedules. Currently right now, street sweeping schedules are typically the day after trash. But we're also working on, Counsel Scott, I've sworn to you that we're going to get this done. So we're going to be looking at the opposite side to get that accomplished as well.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose motion passes. 6.11, Counsel Yam, request city manager to have the appropriate department plan an event in conjunction with Tuskegee Airmen Commemoration Day, or the Tuskegee Airmen, and 6.11 as well, Counsel Yam, request city mayor to prepare a proclamation dedicating the 4th Thursday of March as Tuskegee Airmen Commemoration Day of the Year. Seconded by Counsel Scott.
There is a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark?
Jacqueline Coles?
Good evening, everyone. Jacqueline Coles, 7 Born Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I actually have some handouts here, and I'll, thank you, ma'am. I'm a veteran, and I know that there are veterans in this room. And I thank everyone for your service, for those who are watching now, and for those who will be watching in the future. I'm also a lifetime member of Tuskegee Airmen Incorporated, as well as the local I'm also a lifetime member of Tuskegee Airmen Incorporated, as well as the local chapter that we have in the greater Merrimack Valley, which is the General Charles E. McGee chapter. My shirt says Colonel, but he was promoted to General. In light of how our current nation, as we are progressing, is erasing military history in our military education and in our military training, I think that this motion... Thank you, Councilor Yem. Is very timely. So thank you for the motions to support the proclamation for and commemoration of Tuskegee Airmen Commemoration Day every year on the 3rd Thursday in March. These actions are part of a state and national campaign led by Tuskegee Airmen Incorporated to get every state and eventually the federal government to recognize this day. Tuskegee Airmen Commemoration Day is already celebrated in several states, including Colorado, Florida, and Virginia. With this proclamation, Lowell will be in support of bills HD 1784 and SD 1637, an act establishing the 4th Thursday in March as Tuskegee Airmen Commemoration Day in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, adding themselves to a list of states, excuse me, states celebrating this day. Ms. DeRoche, I want to publicly thank you because she was very instrumental during Black History Month in ensuring that Nancy Lieutenant Cologne was presented in the social media campaign. And she has a tie to Lowell because during that time, she was a nurse in Lowell General Hospital, and she is a documented original Tuskegee Airmen in the paperwork that you have. So Tuskegee Airmen are tied to the city of Lowell. I have met General Charles E. McGee, who is now passed. Ms. Cologne has just passed in January. Harold May is in Boston, and Enoch Woodhouse is also still surviving and is in Boston. And if you wouldn't mind, I would just like to read this into the record. Before the Tuskegee Airmen, no African American had ever been a United States military pilot. The Jim Crow laws, a series of racist laws that enforced the separate but equal treatment of African Americans, were used as justification for blocking previously attempts by African American soldiers to become pilots. African Americans served bravely and with distinction in every theater of World War II, while simultaneously struggling for their own civil rights from the world's greatest democracy. Although the United States Armed Forces were officially segregated until 1948, World War II laid the foundation for post-war integration of the military. In 1941, fewer than 4,000 African Americans were serving in the military, and only 12 African Americans had become officers. By 1945, more than 1.2 million African Americans would be serving in uniform on the home front in Europe and the Pacific, including thousands of African American women in the Women's Auxiliary. The Tuskegee Airmen achieved a number of successes during World War II. The 332nd Fighter Bomb was awarded the Distinguished Unit Citation for their actions on March 24th, 1945. On their way to Berlin, Germany, the Red Tails destroyed three German ME-262s. In all, the Tuskegee Airmen earned eight Purple Hearts, 14 Bronze Stars, three Distinguished Unit Citations, and 96 Distinguished Flying Crosses. Again, in light of our current political situation, where the contributions of Americans are being erased from our current military history, including women being erased from military history, I would urge and hope that this council, this body, would support the motion for the proposal for Tuskegee Airmen Commemoration Day being the 3rd Thursday of March of every year and supporting an activity on the 27th of March in 2025. Thank you.
Councilor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Ms. Jacqueline Cole, who approached me, and she's on the city veteran committees. I confess that I do not know much, so I ask to her to give me the motion so that all of us will be educated and appreciate of what Tuskegee Airmen have done for our country. My only question to... Through you to the city solicitor. How does the city would draft that kind of, you know, like commemoration or proclamation declaring the 3rd Thursday? Is that something that normally the law department drafted up and make it into part of the city ordinance?
I don't think it's ordinance, Councilor. You know, we'll put something together to commemorate the event.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you so much, yes.
We'll reach out to Ms. Cole as well to help out.
We do have a proclamation drafted for your consideration.
Perfect. Awesome. So Ms. DeRoche will be in touch here and go from there. It sounded good. Thank you very much. Put you to work tonight. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. All say, Councilor? All in favor of the AI, opposed motions... Both motions pass. 6.13, Councilor Janess. Request city manager provide a report outlining structural inspections performed on all city-owned parking garages in the past 24 months or any other inspections or activities undertaken when forgot to fall in concrete in multiple garages. Seconded by Councilor Noon. Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I filed this motion after a constituent reached out to me with what she had seen in the Lower Locks Garage recently. I've also seen parking spots blocked off in the Roy Garage recently, seemingly for the same issue. It seems like when the temperature changes pretty severely in one direction or another is when this kind of thing has happened. I know that the Roy Garage has been struggling with this for years. My wife's car and my car have both had concrete fall on it in different times. Many neighbors have had the same thing happen as well. And I'm really just concerned that this is going to happen to a person and not a car at some point. I don't know if it's happening in other garages. I know there was something that happened over in the Downs Garage as part of that construction project. I don't... I think it was not concrete, but it was something falling from the ceiling. So basically, this is a safety concern, and I want to make sure we're on top of it, and we have a plan to resolve it going forward in a permanent fashion. It seems like if we come in and have somebody put up concrete, it's there until it's not and it falls. When we're patching holes and stuff, that doesn't seem like it's having the desired effect. So I just want to make sure we're on top of this and we get ahead of it before something tragic happens. Thank you.
All in favor of the AI, opposed motion passes. 6.15, Councilors Dakota and Scott. Request city manager work with the appropriate city departments, stakeholders, to develop and implement a monthly parking garage program for downtown businesses. No second needed.
There are registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clerk.
Sarah Quigley.
Thank you again. I'm Sarah Quigley. I live at 17 Edson Street. I own the social pub in downtown Lowell on Jackson Street. I have currently eight employees under my employ, including myself. Five of us drive. We all park in the parking garage. So that becomes pretty costly for me as a business owner. The current pricing is $125 a month for parking passes, which I do cover for my full-time employees. But employees that work maybe two or three days a week don't necessarily use those parking passes, so they're paying for themselves, which if they work a full shift is, you know, $16, which is a good hour of their shift each week, which is not a lot for some of these high school and college kids that work for us. It's not just me, it's other businesses. In the past, they... There was a plan where all of the smaller businesses tried to get together as a group to buy the 20-plus member pass. But that required one business to be responsible for collecting all of the money and getting the money to pay the garage, which isn't feasible. It puts a lot of stress on the smaller business owners. It's hard enough having employees, trying to get them into downtown, trying to figure out a way for them to work with us where, especially where I have groomers, which is a... Right now, trying to hire groomers is very hard. There's a lot of competition for that. So even though I pay really well, if they're looking at paying for parking and then, you know, they could go work in Drake it or Chelmsford and not pay for parking because there's a parking lot, it puts a little strain on me. And it's not just my business, it's other businesses. We do talk a lot amongst ourselves. Most of us have maybe three to 10 employees, so we're not looking to buy a 20-plus pass. So if we had a way to either subsidize or... I know we give residential parking, but there are, again, like people that live... All of my employees live in Lowell or just outside of Lowell. If they could present a, possibly a page stub or something that could reduce the burden on them to encourage them to work and stay in the city, especially in the downtown area. And that, I think that would also help reduce some of the cars that end up staying in the... On the street parking and employees in different businesses that will tend to move from one spot to another rather than park in the garage, which we're trying as business owners to encourage our employees to park in the garages so that those spots are open for people coming to pick up a cup of coffee, to visit a restaurant for an hour or two. So I think that would help kind of reduce the burden of those spots being circled and taken by employees looking for, you know, to kind of bypass that two-hour parking limit. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Shannon Ehrenberg.
Hi, I'm Shannon. I own the bakery at 201 Market Street. I've actually been a business owner in downtown since 2018, where I took over Sweet Lydia's on Merrimack Street. And I have been talking about this issue for years in the Small Business Association, as Sarah was talking about. I want to reiterate every single one of her points, basically. The policy right now is that 20-plus cars need to be on one account for a discount to be given. And that doesn't represent the climate of the downtown businesses. Most are small businesses, most don't have that many cars, so it doesn't make sense to me that that would be in place in the first place if it's not going to be helpful. And when we had one business taking ownership of the 20 cars from all the different businesses, at one point, they just decided to drop half of the people on the list because it became too much for them, and I was one of those people who were dropped. So then, then what do I do? So I have a good three employees that all need parking passes. I myself need a parking pass since I live in Pawtucketville. All of my employees are from Lowell, so it just seems like it... It becomes really expensive, and it's already expensive enough, just like the councilman was saying earlier, just to run a small business. So making it a little easier would just be a real... Just a good thing for the small business owners. It was something that I brought up in the 2020 parking study as well. So I know that you guys have been probably thinking about this for a while, so... Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Scott, go ahead. You go first.
Yeah, I'll start. So this discussion started with the downtown business owner about them moving their spaces from zone to zone, their vehicles, going in and out of the garage to go do deliveries, pickups, and how expensive that started to become paying out of pocket like that. And it started the discussion, the town that I work in, we have $50 a month business passes for all businesses that they can purchase through the treasurer's office. It's deeply discounted, but you cannot park overnight. The system that they have right now, you have to do, as you mentioned, you have to buy in a block of 20, and they're only a slight discount even at that, at the block of 20. So it's really not helping the small businesses downtown. I think this would greatly help. It would move cars out of the metered spots and into the garages. The system that we use in the town that I work at is they sell a limited number at certain garages that have a lower capacity. We could even look at price differences, I guess, if we wanted to push cars to the Hamilton Canal Garage. I'm just saying that could be an option we could discuss in the finance subcommittee, maybe. But I did look online real quick, and there were many Watertown, Melrose, Somerville, Brookline, Beverly. They all offered rates, pretty low rates, too, $25 to $50 a month for businesses from only during the metered times, like 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So there was no overnight with it. So I think it's a good discussion to have, a way to help our small businesses. Thank you.
Councilor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heard the same thing as Councilor Scott was hearing from other vendors, other home business owners as well. So I... Last night, actually, the city manager was at the Highland Neighborhood Committee, and I did speak with him for a few minutes. And he thought he might have some... Something in the works. Maybe you can enlighten us all, Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Yes, I was at the Highlands. We were there pretty late, the two councils there. But we're hoping before the budget to bring something here for all the councils to consider that's, quite frankly, going to give the administration a little bit more flexibility. And the flexibility would include things like this. We've always gone through the ordinance and the ordinance process, going to the law department, ensuring that the law department, that we can do it, coming back to the council. And I'll give you an example. The two hours downtown. Originally, we had taken all types of input from folks, and our goal was to kind of keep cars moving, coming in, having lunch or dinner, and then moving on. And now we're finding out that two hours is too short. So maybe three works, maybe four. Maybe it's okay that if people stayed at that meter. So what I'll be requesting prior to the budget is a little bit more flexibility. Of course, giving the council full authority at any point in time to take it back. But things like this, the programming that we could put together for small businesses, sometimes we're not always seeing that in... The ordinance is kind of... It's kind of strict. So what we're trying to work on is something that would give us a little bit more flexibility, where we'd be able to move on. For instance, every council here has talked to me about the downtown with the two-hour firm parking that we put forth. If there was a little bit more flexibility, maybe we could have went to three and then four to see what is the sweet spot. Or maybe it should be eight. But once again, trying to govern something that is so flexible, and talking to most of the restaurant owners and some of the business owners, they feel the same way. It's always kind of shifting. But I think that this is something that we could definitely accomplish with just a little bit more flexibility. And of course, coming to the council and letting you know what we're thinking if it were to come to a small business group. We do have small business numbers, and I think the small business group is 20 people, but we need to lower that to another number, which is something, once again, the ordinance wouldn't allow us to do, but maybe with the flexibility, we could.
So we should be hearing word soon on what you're going to bring forth to the council?
That's correct, Councilor.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a great motion. I appreciate the small businesses coming in tonight. I've lived this, I've been in their shoes, and I know exactly what they're going through. And they need relief. There's no two ways about it. You know, so I'd like to see, as Councilor Scott said, you know, certain municipalities have discounted rates for businesses and employees. You know, I don't want to say we put them in a remote location, but perhaps these upper floors of the garages where you don't want to take up prime parking for customers at the same time. So I think this, you know, some thought has to go into this. But at the same time, Mr. Manager, I'm very confident you'll come to some compromise here for these businesses, and let's help them out the best we can because they need it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate this motion coming forward. My colleagues, this is something the manager and I have talked about in various ways over the last several years, including those ordinance changes to give a little more flexibility to the administration. I think that's important because we're never going to make everyone happy all the time. There isn't enough parking, there isn't enough square footage in the downtown to give everyone the space in front of the business they want to walk into for free for as long as they want, which is what everybody wants. So everything is a compromise. And when we're talking about these compromises, and we're changing prices, and we're changing regulations, it can be a little burdensome, and it certainly is slow to have to go through this process of amending the ordinance all the time. So I think this is a good step in the right direction to build some flexibility in without taking all the rules away. So I look forward to seeing what you come back with and what the proposals are. I think it's also important to note that if you look at the facts on the ground, when that group rate was created, most people were probably paying for their parking spots by bringing a check to the parking office every month. And so the group rate was probably created in part to reduce the amount of labor on the part of the city to process all those checks and all those payments. to process all those checks and all those payments. All that happens online now, for the most part. So we should be able to take advantage of that and be able to create a program that's more flexible and allows more people access as long as they're paying with a credit card. And it just runs every month, and the magic happens. Rather than having to deal with a paper check and checking off a list and the whole rigmarole that I'm sure used to be involved with processing these payments. So I think it's a good time to take a look and figure out how we can modernize this and how we can empower our small businesses to be as successful as possible downtown. Thank you.
Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, another great motion. This is a motion that I think we have to look at very carefully, because I have a goal, and I'm sure everybody has the same goal. I want to fill up the vacant spots in the downtown. I want to bring business here. This is what we say every time we run. What is your goal? I want to fill the spots that are vacant. I want to bring in businesses here. Maybe this is one of the main reasons that people aren't coming here to set up a business, because there's rules, and I know we have to follow rules, but it's outrageous to me. You get a discount if you have 20 people, number one. Not every business has 20 people. Secondly, we're going to, it's one person has to collect all the money. I mean, that's time-consuming. So we're adding obstacles for people that want to set a business up here to jump over. So through the, Mayor, to you, Mr. Manager, we got to make it a little bit easier. Maybe they'll spread the word, ooh, you should open up a business in Lowell. You have a good rate when you park in the garage and you free up the space in front of your business so people can park there. You don't want it monopolized by the people at work there that are going to go out every two hours and fill a meter. So this is a very good motion. Take another look at it. I'd rather do it low and get less money, but have it vibrating with the business overwhelming in the empty storefronts and have them full. Those people are going to go to lunch and go very close to where they work, and that's going to be much better than all the money that we're going to get. This is real, look at the overall picture. You may lose on this end, but you're gaining on this end. And that, I want to see life downtown, and that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Council Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rock. Through you to Manager Goldin. Have any of the small businesses reached out to you or your department about this?
Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Yes, I've talked to a couple of the restaurants, as well as small businesses. And we're looking at different ideas, which garages you would be able, I mean, everyone's not going to be able to go to one garage, right? So we'll try to figure this out. And I think the thing that stops us is just that flexibility. And that's what we have been working on, and how we could obtain that flexibility. Once again, with full control, the council would still have full control. But just allowing a quicker reaction time. Once again, I can only bring up the fact of that two-hour piece that we thought was going to be a valid piece for the restaurants to be able to utilize. We're finding out that two hours is just not long enough. People go to a meeting, they park at a meter, and then they want to go grab a sandwich, and it's just not enough time. So once again, I think the flexibility could add some assistance where we'd be able to quickly respond to some of the stuff. I think what Council Janess stated, we're going to have an issue satisfying everyone's desires, but this could give us an opportunity.
Is there a way that this council can make a motion to have you work with them until we get to that stage, to bring it to, for the employees piece? Not so much for people visiting, but for the employees piece to say, is there a way we can put everybody into that 50 group, even though they're not, don't have to meet with that 50 group on some level? Is there a way the council can make a motion afford you to do that?
Kind of doing right now, right? That's the motion that was made.
Well, no, he said it's going to take time to get to that stage. So I'm talking from today to that time. Is there a way?
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. That's the amending of the ordinance. So I'd put that to Solicitor Williams, and we'll try to get this flexibility on the ordinance done sooner than the budget. The budget's right around the corner, but we can get, we can try to see if we can get that done sooner, where there's more flexibility for the administration to work with groups and organizations to say, okay, you know, four can go this way, et cetera. So if I can get back to you next week to find out when the flexibility is. But right now, the ordinance states, for instance, the ordinance states that a small, a group, the group rate is 20. Now, that's been something that probably has been on the books for, God knows. So we need to change that. Could I do it? I suppose, but I would be in violation of the ordinance, and that would be a problem.
We've waived fees before in violation of the ordinance, so that's all I'm saying.
It's probably something we could do. I'd rather just change the ordinance.
No, I would say change the ordinance in the end, but until we get to that point, so that we can alleviate some of the financial hardships.
If I can get an answer from the council by next, by the next meeting? We're close.
Okay.
By the next meeting to just allow that flexibility in the ordinance, and then we can move forward, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. I think this is a great motion, and you know what this kind of reminds me of? It's, through you to Mr. Manager. It's, when you first came in, we used to brainstorm kind of ideas of, what are some of the things that, as an employer, we can offer as an incentive for employees? You know, we kicked that idea train around quite a bit, you know, and we saw some communities did childcare, they did other things to incentivize their employees, and it kind of adds to being a good employer. I mean, if we think about it, our small business community is limited as to what kind of benefits they can offer their employees. A lot of times, insurance is out of the question. It's not doable for the price that they have to pay, especially if you have three, four, five employees. But I think these are the kind of motions and incentives that can help a small business be considered a good employer. I mean, hey, you know, it might not be much, but if you're paying whatever that minimum parking price is, or you have, even in a garage, with transportation to and from your job from your boss or your coworker, or whatever it ends up shaping up to be, I think this is well worth taking a look at. And I think, you know, as everyone spoke to, the more we can do to pack that downtown, the better off we'll be. Thank you.
Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Council Scott and Councilor Dakota, for filing these motions. I know this ordinance has been, you know, amended and re- amended for some time. And it need to. It need to be. It need to be, so that we address the need of the small business in downtown. We spend a lot of money, spend a lot of money in downtown helping small businesses, hoping that they're successful. But this is one of the obstacles that are facing them, and then we have to do what we can to help them succeed. Because while, when they succeed, we succeed as a city. I know that, you know, the ordinance has been, you know, the city solicitors listening to it now, and is going to work on it now. Meanwhile, I mean, if anything you can do, Mr. Managers, to assist Sarah and Shannon, because Shannon just opened her bakery next between Vrav and, you know, Atenean, you know, the restaurants there. So anything you can do to help them, really, in the meantime, while we're waiting for the ordinance from the city solicitor will be greatly helped. Thanks.
Alvin Fairsey, I oppose motion passes, and we have finally done the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Council Scott.
Suspend the rules to take 7.2 out of order? We have employees waiting.
7.2, sure. Informational reports, 7.2. Which one?
Second.
Okay, two reports.
Actually, I think both of them.
Great. 7.2, I think, Council Scott's got it, or Council Robinson? Alvin Fairsey, I oppose motion passes. Official report, our response, home modernization navigator. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council. Councilors, we had a great opportunity to talk about the home modernization, but we have our resident expert here, Ms. Moses, if you'd like to give the presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilor Scott, for taking this out of order. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for turning the floor over to me. Lowell has another exciting opportunity to help move our community forward in terms of our energy savings goals, our decarbonization goals. And we're really being recognized for the leadership that comes from this council and from our community. We're one of only two communities that's been selected by the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center to participate in their home modernization navigator program. This program is something that can provide one-to-one assistance and really specialized care for homeowners and renters and one-to-four unit buildings, to help them to understand the landscape of energy efficiency, of decarbonization, different tax credits that are available, different kinds of incentives, different kinds of rebates. And it's a really exciting thing that we're piloting. We wanted to put an informational on this week because tomorrow, there's actually going to be a webinar that will really help to roll this out for the Lowell community. So we wanted to make people aware of that. If you haven't already, you can go to navigatecleanenergy.com/LolKickoff. You can sign up there in the language that's most comfortable for you. They will be running simultaneous webinars in the major languages in Lowell, and the navigator itself also provides that type of language support. So we just wanted to provide this information to the city council and to the residents of Lowell. And if there are any questions, please let me know.
Thank you very much. Official report, 7.2, again, informational, 7.5.
Good evening, councilors. You have the full informational report in your packets. I'm happy to entertain any questions, but I know it's been a long night for everybody, and happy to keep moving along.
I just want to say thank you very much to Case, Mr. Crew, and everybody over there. They did a fabulous job. And once again, going back to the Middle Street, Palm Street area, it's been really an explosive opportunity. Greatly, greatly done. Ms. DeRozan, thank you very much, and Mr. Crew, that everyone's doing a fabulous job.
Turning to motion responses, 7.1A, 311 update with attachment. Councilor Noon and Robinson?
I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. I actually downloaded the app today, and it's, I think it's been a long time coming. It's something that we've needed for quite some time, and I think it's going to help us in many different ways, as we discussed in the past. I'm sure it will help your behind-the-scenes with analytics and data as well. And even something as simple as potholes. It's that time of year. Now, I think we have, now, we have the means, though, to look at, you know, maybe quadrants, as we've discussed, and say, okay, there's 18 backlog in this quadrant. We're going to address those and move to the next quadrant, whatever your team decides. But I think now you actually have some data to take a hard look at and see how we get some efficiencies. So, thank you very much.
Council Noon?
I have nothing to say, but thank you, Moran, and thank you, his team, for making it happen.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. I want to say thank you, Mr. Fernandez, very much. And it was a long journey on this particular piece. But I also want to take the opportunity to introduce Edith Rodriguez, just to say hello. And she's one of our 311 experts. Maybe she wants to say hello. And if there's any issues, challenges, ideas, if people are having a difficult time trying to navigate this, already, we put this up, and I believe we have over 90 responses so far, and that's just within the last few hours. So this is something that's going to be extremely important, as well as the progress implementing this has been not challenging, but we're doing it correctly. So, Edith, is there anything you'd like to say?
All I want to say is just thank you, Mr. Manager and the city council, for your support. There's still some way to go, but we're working on it, and hopefully, with your support, we'll continue and improve this 311 system. Thank you.
Once again, thank you, guys.
Council Robinson?
Just have a quick question. I know we're still working through some kinks, obviously. It just came out. But in the future, will we have two-way communication capability with this? Do you anticipate? So if the city wanted to send out something using 311, excise tax bills are going out on this date to anyone that's subscribed, would we be able to have that capability?
So I will say, that will pass this question to me, Dan. For me, it's more like a 311, but I'll lay hands on that.
Yes, Council. Actually, there is a component as part of the 311 tool that does allow a push-out to 311 applications. It's something that we haven't focused on, because we've been focused on getting the service requests up. Similar to when you look at the smartphone app, we will have a couple of other things listed on that screen to just kind of help navigate folks to things as quickly as possible.
Excellent, and thank you again.
Motion response B, NEMCOG updates on Current Projects and Future Goals. Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to seeing Ms. Wright here in early April.
Excellent. Motion response C, Provider Update of MBTA Property. Council Getchea?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager. Thank you for the report. Assistant City Manager, do we have a timeline on the cleanup?
Mr. Machado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I haven't heard back from the MBTA folks, but they are working. I don't know if they have to put the cleanup out to bid, but the plan is, is that if I don't hear back from them next week, I'm going to reach out to Rep. Hong and Rep. Elliott and Vanna, Rep. Howard, and we'll circle back with them.
Can you keep us updated after that conversation? Just send it, I guess, to everybody, and just tell us where we are on it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Motion accept, reports and responses, and place on file by Council Yem, second by Council Getchea, Alvin Fairsey, I oppose motion passes. 7.3, Communication from the Planning Board, Reclaiming the Zoning Code Amendment to Extend the TTF for Rivers Edge Pass, which we already approved at a public hearing. Motion accept, place on file by Council Getchea, second by Council Janess. Alvin Fairsey, I oppose motion passes. 7.4, Communication, City Manager Request to State Travel, One LPD, Two DPD. Motion adopt, motion to adopt by Council Janess, second by Council Getchea. Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchea?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rock? Yes. Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we suspend the rules and allow 8.1 to 8.9 to be bundled up?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Eight, motion to the City Manager, 8.1. Vote to accept the 138,600 MCC grant case. 8.2, vote to MSBA Statement of Interest to Bailey School. 8.3, vote MSBA Statement of Interest to Butler School. 8.4, vote to MSBA Statement of Interest to Butler School. 8.5, the vote to MSBA Statement of Interest to Bailey School. 8.6, the vote to MSBA Statement of Interest for the Green Elge. 8.7, vote for the MSBA Statement of Interest for McAvenue. 8.8, vote to MSBA Statement of Interest for the Rogers. And 8.9, a vote for the MSBA Statement of Interest for the Shaughnessy.
Move approval.
Move by, first by Council Noon, second by Council Dakota. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, beforehand, I just want to make sure people understand that those are eight schools that we're putting into an MSBA Statement of Interest, so that is work on eight of our schools that were voted, Statement of Interest. Yeah, I just want people to understand what we're doing before we go right through it and not understand the public, what your purpose is. Yeah, thank you.
Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchea?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rock? Yes. Nine, Order from the City Manager, 9.1, 60-day trial. We have the full reading and second reading by title. Order pursuant to Chapter 266 of the Code Ordinance, City of Lowell, Mass. Concerning Section 266-6, therefore, until temporary experimental regulations, temporary traffic regulations are hereby implemented for period up to 60 days. Need a motion to adopt by Council Scott, second by Council Yem. Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchea?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson? regulations are hereby implemented for up to 60 days. The emotion to adopt by Council Scott, second by Council Yem. Roll call, Mr. Clerk. Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchea?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rock? Yes. Moving on to reports, Subcommittee, 10.1, Housing Subcommittee, March 4, 2025. Chairman Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Subcommittee met last Tuesday, two Tuesdays ago, March 4. Myself, the chair, and we have Council Chow and Getchea were members of the Housing Subcommittee. Present also were Council Belanger, Council Noon, Council Mercier. Council Robinson came in after, and then the state rep Tara Hong also were in the meeting. We also have Ms... We have France Siciliano and then Mr. Camilio Espira were from the DPD along with Chris Hayes from the NIMCOG. Ms. Siciliano commented on the HPP production and the working with the NIMCOG to come up with the housing production plan. Mr. Hayes talked about the outline of the NIMCOG working partnership with many other different housing entity. Mr. Hayes noticed that the report was prepared through a Lowell Forward Initiative and make it part of that plan and participated by the public and community. Mr. Hayes outlined a key finding. One of the key findings is that people came to Lowell for an opportunity, and then when they get well to do and they move out of the city. And also, Mr. Hayes presented the key finding that the City of Lowell by 2030 need about 3,150 new housing units, 800 of those who need to be unaffordable because based on the census they get from the public, 599 of them have reported, self-reported, that there's no kitchen and no bathroom. And I myself question, how does someone have a home without the kitchen and the bathroom? And Mr. Hayes mentioned that someone may be sharing the apartment with someone, they only have microwave to cook and all of that, and share the bathroom, and that's a self-reporting. That's what was collected. And out of that, 3.6% or less percentage of the people are rent burdened household. 19% of them have reported they have severe burden by rent. So this way, right now, is that the vacancy rate is really high. Council Chow was talking about asking the question about the opportunity. How do we come up with the opportunity to allow people who came to Lowell for an opportunity and also to stay in Lowell instead of moving out of Lowell? And Mr. Hayes talking about if we could providing affordable housing for people to continue after they make a better, improve their life financially, they could purchase a home and stay in Lowell. Also, Council Getchea raised an issue about, you know, affordability. It has to be coming from somewhere, subsidizing. And also, Council Getchea also raised an issue about the parking with the MBTA zoning as well. So I just want to point it out that this report, the people at home can watch it on the LTC, the Housing Subcommittee meeting, March 4, to get further information. We also, as a group, have voted to forward this as part of the next step of the housing production plan that the Subcommittee voted to forward that to the full council, and after that, after the council voted to approve, will be forwarded to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Community. The EOCHL will evaluate the plan that the City of Lowell presented, and then in 90 days, the EOHLC will come back, either approve it or ask for amended. So the Subcommittee adjourned at 5:00, at 6:25 PM on March, and then we voted to continue discussion as a group. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Motion accept the report of progress by Council Yem, second by Council Scott, Alton Fairsayi opposed motion passes. 10.2, nonprofit Subcommittee, we'll do that next week. 11 petitions, 1.1 claims for property damage. Motion refer law enforcement for report recommendation by Council Janess, second by Council Chow, Alton Fairsayi opposed motion passes. 11.2, Monselainos, Gregorio Modo Sanchez requests insulation of 15-minute parking sign at 696 Lake View Ave. Motion refer transportation engineer for report recommendation by Council Belanger, second by Council Noon, Alton Fairsayi opposed motion passes. 12, City Council Executive Session, 12.1. Executive Session to consider and discuss ongoing negotiations relative to HCID Passes, 2345, Rep. Companies LLC, public discussions, which could have detrimental effect on the city's position. The motion enter Executive Session and adjourn from that session by Council Mercier and second by Council Yem. Mr. Clerk? Council Scott?
Yes.
Council Yem?
Yes.
Council Belanger?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Dakota?
Yes.
Council Getchea?
Yes.
Council Janess?
Yes.
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Noon?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rock? Yes. Announcements?
Yes.
Council Chow, we're down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past weekend, the Lowell Irish Inc. kicked off the Irish Cultural Week with the mass at St. Patrick's, then a parade and the Irish flag raising. This week, the Lowell Irish Inc. will continue to celebrate its 42nd annual Irish Cultural Week tomorrow, Wednesday, March 12. Please join me, Father Conway, and the Lowell Irish at 7:00 PM at Mount Pleasant Country Club for the Aker Forum and the Anam Chara Awards. Come enjoy the raffle, baskets, and Lowell Irish goods. Come for the Irish culture, community, and friendship. I look forward to seeing many of you. Thank you.
Council Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick shout out to my goddaughter, who became the first girl wrestling New England champion in wrestling in Rhode Island this week.
Does she have a name?
Amelia Martinez.
Very nice.
She's a junior this year, so she's still got another year. She'll take you right down, I swear to God.
She'll put you in a double arm bar.
I was fortunate enough to watch that match. So Take the Pledge, White Ribbon Day, a community response to ending domestic violence is March 13, 2025, from 12 to 12:30 PM at City Hall's lobby. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking about Irish heritage, let's not forget on Saturday, this Saturday coming, there'll be the St. Patrick's Day breakfast at Lindsey's at 9:00. That'll be Saturday, March 15, and we're going to have the honor and pleasure of roasting and honoring Tommy Shanahan from the Owl Diner. But let me back up a bit because talking about the Irish festivities and the Aram Kara Awards, 7:00 PM at Mount Pleasant, Sakari Chow was very humble, but he was one of the recipients of that award, so let's give him a round of applause.
Glad to be Irish.
Chow, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council. Council Yem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three announcements to make. Number one is the Hometown Hero Banners Program for 2025 is in active. It's active as on the city website. Those who at home want to honor your veterans, please reach out to the City of Lowell. It's on the website, there's an information and a form. Also, I'd like to announce that the City of Lowell will host the 50th Vietnam Vet Commemoration that will take place here at the City Hall on Friday, March 28, at 10:00 AM. I encourage all those at home who are watching, who know someone who is a Vietnam Vet or maybe their families, to really forward their name to the City Veteran Commission to honor them on that day as well. Last but not least, I want to wish an early birthday wishes to our Councilor Wayne Janess. His birthday will be on Sunday. We want to wish him a good, happy birthday and good health.
Thank you.
And now, finally, we have a ribbon cutting this Thursday, 3:00 PM, the Infused Afro-Fusion Ribbon Restaurant, 11 County Square.